Testing.
I don't know. I don't hear it.
I don't hear it. Someone go help him.
I don't know how to work it. Tony's coming. Oh, it's on.
Hello?
Are we good? Okay, alright. Alright, uh, here we go. I call to order the Lincoln City Budget Committee for the City of Lincoln City. Today is Tuesday, May 23rd. The time is now 5:31. May we have a roll call, please?
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Kevin Honbaum.
Here.
Doug Holbrook. Chester Norikas. Dee Ritchie.
Here.
Susan Walkie. Kit Ward, not here yet. Randy Weldon, he's excused. Don Williams, not here. Dick Anderson.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Amanda Cherry Holmes.
Here.
Jim Davis. Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Alright, so we have a comments from citizens present. I would like to move forward before we go through our budget. Is anyone opposed to that? Does that need to be a motion, or can we just unanimously agree?
Consensus.
Okay, wonderful. So, I don't have a list, so if we can just have, Patrick, I see your hand, sir. Please state your name.
Thank you very much. My name is Patrick Alexander, and I am the President of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter. And I promise I'll be brief. Thank you very much for allowing comment tonight. We are one of the many groups who are applying, requesting for funds from the city in the coming fiscal year. We are asking for $50,000 to help establish a designated facility to house the emergency warming shelter, and such other homeless services as partnerships will allow. We are an all-volunteer group, and any funds awarded would be used solely for mortgage or lease payments, utilities, and any leaseholder improvements required, such as the installation of showers, which would be a key issue. This drive for a designated facility was originally spearheaded by Rich Gartrell, who was with our sister group, Lincoln City Homeless Solutions. And those of you who are on City Council might have seen that original proposal come through earlier this year. Rich had to step aside from spearheading the drive due to health issues, and so the warming shelter picked up the proposal and is bringing it forward. So, it's a different lead agency, but it's the same proposal with the same end goal of a designated facility. We are still partnering with Lincoln City Homeless Solutions towards this end, and I think that you might hear from them in a second. The idea of a designated homeless facility has broad support from institutions throughout our community. And to help demonstrate that, and because I know you're all starved for reading material during budget time, we have a packet for each of you containing eight letters of support. Some of them gathered by Rich Gartrell during his time spearheading this, and some gathered by me more recently. We have letters of support, and they're from State Representative Dave Gonberg, Lincoln County Commissioner Bill Hall, United Way, St. James Santiago Episcopal Church, My Sister's Place, Dr. Leslie Ogden of Samaritan North Lincoln Hospital, Family Promise, and Chapel by the Sea Presbyterian Church. Homelessness, as I'm sure you all know, is a serious issue in our community. It's a multifaceted issue, and one that we're not going to solve all at once. But I would recommend this as a prudent investment of public funds towards a first step in that direction. Having a designated facility to house the warming shelter would allow us to open for more nights, to keep people healthier, to increase our range of services, to broaden our partnerships, and to reach more homeless individuals, and help them take the first steps in turning their lives around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Yes, ma'am?
Greetings. I'm Lynn Rodstrom. I'm President of Lincoln City Homeless Solutions. Lincoln City Homeless Solutions operates an information, resource, and referral website and hotline 365 days a year. We receive emergency calls from homeless people seeking a warm place to be. We work closely with the warming shelter and Shiloh the Gathering Place to refer clients to services, particularly when weather conditions cause hypothermia. People have a warm place to go, and this saves lives. If it were not for these agencies, people could freeze to death on Lincoln City streets. Homeless Solutions refers our clients to 15 other agencies, which provide services to local homeless people. People are generally homeless because there is a shortage of housing which meets their needs and is affordable. Many people who work here live in their cars, in campgrounds and tents, or substandard housing outside the city limits, not because they want to, but because they can't afford anything else. And I'm the one that gets their calls. I'm the one that gets the lady whose roof fell in. I'm the one whose family is in their car freezing out in Otis. I'm the one that gets the call when the tents blow away. So, I'm right there, you know, first on the line. I know what goes on, and if I don't have somewhere that they can go for shelter, they're just out there, and this can't keep happening. It's not right. Many of these people cannot afford, even at an income of $40,000 a year, housing in the city that is safe and clean. All the agencies that serve the homeless work together to solve the problem of folks who've been marginalized due to the lack of affordable housing. We are good at applying Band-Aids to what has become an ever-increasing gaping wound in the social fabric of our city. We need to start solving this problem by obtaining a shelter for the most vulnerable of our residents. We can do this with a combination of city funds, private and public foundation grants, and fundraising. Most of the entities require a 30% cash match from the local entities, such as the city, to qualify for these grant applications. These are big grant applications. Two things are very clear. All of the agencies are working very closely together to alleviate human misery. And without some support from the city, our hands are tied when it comes to getting major grants. A nonprofit agency should run the shelter because of its capacity to secure other funding. The plan, once a shelter begins operating, is to have an office area set aside for homeless solutions and all other agencies to provide human resources services for clients. Homeless Solutions works with Lincoln City Warming Shelter to assist in grant writing, grant administration, and resource referrals. Lincoln City Warming Shelter has the track record of providing seasonal services to the homeless, and Homeless Solutions strongly supports their operation of a year-round shelter. We commit to basing our offices in that shelter, and we will provide our services at no cost to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Have another comment from citizens present? Okay, so Ron and Debbie. Oh, yes, Susan, please. Oh, may I let the record show that Mr. Kit Ward is here?
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Welcome.
Okay, so now, we will go through our adds and subtractions, right? Sure, there's a more, better way to say that. The million dollars is something that we're, we had that one-time purchases for. Ms. Hinton has suggested that we start with the million dollars and go from there. I have questions as far as if something is tied in, like the first one is a vehicle for Parks and Rec Director, you know, we, I think at that time, should talk about the increase of that as well, in conjunction with that, and then still just go down through that million-dollar list, so that way, yes, it is that million-dollar list, but also it will tie into the budget.
An ongoing expense.
Correct. So, with that...
The other thing is, is that there, what, the ones that she has tied to my list, there are more than just those that would affect that million dollars. So, what I would suggest is that when you go through that, you also then look at the other items that could be affected by that million dollars as well.
Okay. Okay, so, we have, the first one is the, does everyone have that? Does everyone have, did you pass that to everyone?
This one, yes.
Okay.
Everybody should have that, it was put down from, Mr. Chair, may I just make a couple of preliminary comments?
Absolutely.
Just a couple of preliminary comments. The most important one is that there are three things, or two things that you're actually doing tonight. The first is approving the budget, or the budget as amended by you, and sending that forward to the City Council for adoption. And you are approving the tax rate, both the property tax rate and the sewer tax levy. Those are the two items that you, and those also get forwarded on as part of the budget to the City Council for adoption. One of the things to point out is, that I wanted to just mention is, with the list of the items that I had sent to you, there's choices in those. Now, however, in order to make it a little bit easier, for example, if something is going to, we have one that, we have two items that would require, or would be new employees. We're not going to break down where each item goes to, how much goes to Social Security, and how much goes to, so we just put those into salaries and benefits, and then Debbie will do the work to put them into the right order, so that we don't have to bog things down with that. So, you'll see something, just say salaries and benefits, okay?
Okay. Mr. Chandler, before we start, are there any other things to be added?
Yes, there's, there are, there's, there's, so, in the note that I sent you, I went through all of my notes and said, please check these out and see if there's something I missed. And there are four things that we needed to add on to this. Mr. Honbaum had talked about connected sidewalks. I could not find that in my notes, and so I don't know the amount that you were talking about on that, but I asked Lila to come just in case there's something with that. Counselor Anderson asked to add funds to the Unbonded Assessment Fund, but we had not discussed an amount. Chairman Hoagland asked that we add to outside agency requests. There's currently $100,000, and, but we did not discuss exactly what that means. And then we did discuss at the last meeting, but I neglected to put it on, is the extra cost for the Taft dock repair. We have $100,000 in that. The engineers are estimating it'll probably be an additional $100,000.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I suppose, starting with the list from Ms. Hinton for the million dollars, some of them are going to be tied into other departments, and not just a one-time, not simply a one-time cost. So, shall we talk about the Parks and Rec Director before we talk about the vehicle? So, does, so let's do that. Is there a motion to increase the two departments to cover the costs associated with hiring a Parks and Rec Director? Right? That's how it has to, to increase the, tell me how to say this correctly.
Well, there's a couple of ways, there's a couple of ways you can do this. One is just as Chairman Hoagland had talked about, through a motion through each one of these. And then you, and then at the end, you're going to, you'll, Debbie will keep tally, she's working the, she's working the sheet, and she'll keep tally on how this affects the budget, so you'll see a running total. I suspect at the end, you may want to review the whole thing again, if the total doesn't match what you want, okay? So, you can either do that way, or you can try to do it through a consensus. The easiest way, if you find that there is not a general consensus, is to then do a vote on it. But your procedure's right. You should talk about the position before you talk about a vehicle for that position.
And it's helpful if you have a specific amount?
It's $54,125.
From two different departments.
From two different funds.
So...
This is page one of the document I have, I'm sorry.
I just, you know, if we're gonna debate before a motion, the correct procedure about that. So, is it, is it all open to discuss, or does there need to be a motion to be able to discuss?
I think that's entirely up to you on how you would like to proceed with that. Other than, if you do have a motion in a second, there is generally a discussion period, but you can have discussion beforehand as well.
Okay, well...
So, why not make a motion, or somebody that wants, make a motion to what they'd like in general terms? Don't worry about the money right now, to see if there's an interest among the committee to pursue that item.
Okay.
So, kind of a general one, and then, if there's not a total overriding vote, then we can move on to something else.
Okay, so we can make general motions?
It would, something along this would be, along the facts, how I make a motion to add to the budget a director's position for Parks and Recreation. And then Debbie will plug in the numbers if you approve that. But it's, the total cost is 54,125 times two, and, because it affects two different budgets. And then $28,000 for a vehicle.
Which would be the next one if there's a yes for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I move what he said.
So... There has been a motion to increase, or to fund the position of a Parks and Rec Director.
I second it.
There's a motion and a second. It's a discussion.
This is to fund the Parks and Rec Director from the General Fund and also from the Parks and Rec half of that.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Half TRT, half General Fund.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I guess I would just remind the committee that it isn't in the budget, so this would be a switch around. So, it wasn't recommended by the city manager. We heard the chairman of the Parks Committee, one of his lobbying efforts that we've had for this committee, to tell us that, as much as he'd like to, he understands not yet. So, you know, I'm not particularly in favor.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Like, I share concern. We've been without Parks Director for some time. There's, they have proposals out. My feeling would be that this would be something that we have to discuss next year. It's a planned, how we're going to handle this year.
Pardon me?
So, my, I have a great reservation, but I'm not really in favor of it, because I think that we should have enough to see if the plan of the staff, of the private, of the, of the trust to, you know, work. Review next year.
Alright. Chair? Yes, sir. I would speak that, one of the number-one ways that people judge the quality of a city as far as a place to live is parks, and the value of the parks, and the strength of the park system. And by investing in our parks, and in this case, a Parks Director who then owns the process, owns the parks, is focused on it 100% of the time, is an investment in our future as a city and in the livability of Lincoln City. And I hold that in high esteem. It'll, having great parks, more parks, better parks, more improved parks, safer parks, will increase the value of all of our homes, will increase the value of everything in the city, make more people want to be here. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the parks are very important. Three things that people have responded to were community center, the library, and a need for parks. These are the most utilized things by people and tourists who come to our area. And they need a direction and focus from somebody who can see them grow and expand and utilize them to the best of ability. I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
My notes reflect that the Parks Board President was in hi, was in favor of hiring professionals for the Parks Director, for someone who has that background.
That's what I remember, too.
Yeah.
And we have a new Parks Master Plan. We would like to see it implemented by professionals.
Alright. Anybody else would like to speak on this?
Mr. Chair.
Ma'am?
I'm also in favor of having a Director for Parks. Being a parent of a small child, there is a serious lack of parks in this area. And then the parks that are there definitely do need improvement, so, you know, speaking as a parent, it would benefit those of us that have kids.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I butt in, 'cause, you know, we're not talking about the parks. I mean, and I hate to get off, but the motion is a Director, so spending $150,000 into an ongoing basis for a body, 'cause I agree with all the statements around the value of parks, the livability of parks. We just did a master plan, all that kind of stuff, but now you're talking about a body, and an expensive one, ongoing. It's not a capital improvement.
Right.
So, one needs to be thinking of that, the, and how you're gonna fund it every year. And, you know, I think an earlier statement was, you know, let's take a look at what's been recommended, how to handle it, see if that works, before you jump into, 'cause it's, you know, another body.
Right. I think it's a, thank you. It's 108,250, right? Not 150,000?
Let's add the vehicle, let's add the, you know, the uniform, let's add the new lawnmower, let's add, you know, all the stuff. So, I excuse my exaggeration, but it will get out of, the point being, it gets out of hand, and quite frankly, you know, I also rely on our city manager. I haven't heard what that person would do. You know, it's a nice title. We're getting along, you know, the parks, the grass is mowed, they're there. We just finished a nice master plan. And, you know, I think another year of maybe refining, you know, what that job would do, then I could get behind it. But right now, it just seems like we'll move a group of people who are now reporting to somebody else over to a new body and call it Parks and Rec. And I'm a little troubled by that. Not that we can't get there, I just think there hasn't been a lot of thought into it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to say that I am, as I like to say when I'm fully behind something, 100% behind this idea. The Parks and Master, let's say, Parks and Recreation System Plan was a long time coming. They worked very hard on it, so very, very many people were involved in it. And one of the first items on their to-do list was to hire a Parks and Recreation Director. I think the plan will provide a lot of guidance towards what that job description is. And furthermore, we did have one, how many years ago? And so that should provide some guidance as well. And if they need more guidance, hey, I've got a list. I'm not worried about this person being busy. They have the Parks Board to rely on. They have been together for quite some time and can provide a, you know, really good foundation for taking this new person through the Parks Plan and what things are important, and help them, you know, with that vision. I fully support this position.
Okay. Shall we vote, please? Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Ward.
That's okay.
No, no, thank you.
I have one concern about this, and that is, when we do hire a Director, they tend to stay on as long as they wish, and till they retire, so it's a, it's a big commitment, being $100,000, and this person may be with us 20 years. In which case, we're not really spending $100,000, we're spending 1 or 2 million. That's a, that's a big number. So... But on the other hand, parks are precious, and we're not talking necessarily about parks, but when you look at cities that have a wonderful park system, they have a Director, and they can be very valuable in making your community reach its promise. So, I am, I absolutely don't know which way to go on it, but I'm listening to what everybody says.
I like that it was split between the two departments, which one was largely funded, is largely funded by the TRT, and one is funded by the General Fund. So, for me, it was like, those that visit get to benefit from it, and those that live here get to benefit from it. So, for me, that really helped put in perspective, like, who is gonna be funding this, this position, you know? And so, I felt like equally, a lot of, you know, I am a single parent, and I spend a lot of time at those parks, and most of the time, those aren't tourists there, and we get to talk, you know? And, trust me, there's locals as well, but, so I, I see how that could really benefit our image, if you will, about things to do, and from their perspective as well, so...
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chandler, is there a way to offer our, if we did vote for this, was there a way to offer them a one-year contract, rather than signing them on?
I'm just asking.
Sure, hey.
Just asking.
I mean, if, if, how much money we're spending, doesn't make you sit up in your seat, I mean, it should, now what?
Yes, you can always hire an employee like that.
What's that now? That's true.
Liberty anchor.
Alright.
Alright.
Any more discussion? May we have a roll call, or a vote, please?
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug? Chester?
No.
Dee Ritchie?
No.
Walkie? Ward?
I'll put the timer on.
What'd you say? I'm not the last guy voting here, am I?
No, you're not.
I'm not, I hope I'm not the pivot guy.
You're always the pivot.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Anderson?
No.
And Casper?
Yes.
Seven, four.
That would fail. You need eight votes in order to carry something forward. It has to be a majority of the allowed.
The total.
Allowed total, yes, sir.
Okay, so we will ex-nay the vehicle Parks Director. Number two on this list is an increase in the computer software grade upgrade to enable viewing of the budget on our website, coming from our one million dollar surplus. Do we make a motion to increase that? Or, I'm sorry, to make a purchase, to purchase that one-time computer software grade upgrade? Software upgrade.
Excuse me, Chair.
What's the number on that?
What list are you looking at?
This is a, okay, so again, we are going to start with the million dollars, go down the million dollar list, tie in where necessary, and then go to our other list to then talk about that.
You, you have this one.
Yes.
Are you looking at the Hinton?
Yes.
List?
Okay, so this is on, this is number five on page two.
Thank you. Oh, okay, I guess that would work, too. So the, what would it take to add a program that allows people to see the budget on the webpage? This was asked by Mr. Anderson.
This has a one-time cost of five thousand dollars and then would add ten thousand dollars as an operating cost.
Which would be yearly.
Yearly.
I'm not making a motion.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question before anybody makes a motion? I'm unclear as to what it is we're doing on this particular item.
Every one of these are suggestions that have been made by you as to an addition or subtraction from the budget. This one would be the purchase of a program that would allow us to, to be able to show the, the budget in a different way than we show it now.
On the city's website.
On the city's website. Right now, it's just a PDF. As a PDF, yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Um, I don't, I don't know when we take them off, but.
I thought it wasn't on it at all. So what would this?
I don't think, well, it is, as far as I'm aware.
Yeah.
So I guess my question, because to Debbie is, why couldn't this PDF?
It is.
It would be.
I, I think the program was more of a financial reporting, isn't it, rather than the budget? So it allows queries and drill down. Am I correct?
Right. I don't know, it's more, I think, detailed software is how I interpreted the answer to my original question. And I've seen on some city websites, the ability to go in and dig deeper than just a big line item on budgets and current financials on cities. Albany is one, for example. And so I've always thought that was a, could be a nice benefit for citizens who wanted to dig deeper. But at this point, I'm not interested in spending money for it.
There's, there's a motion, right?
Right.
Well, I'm, I'm not ready to move on, okay?
Yeah, this is only my second year on the Budget Committee and my background, as you mostly know, is financial and governmental budgeting. And just the last county I moved from in Virginia has a wonderful, high-level, citizen-centered explanation about what the budget is, by, starting off by saying how much the budget is. All we have now posted is under Finance Department is a, is a click, as I recall, that gives us everyone all of the excruciating detail, but it doesn't give people who don't understand this, an idea of, of what their city is, is budgeting or what their city is spending. So I am in, in, in strong favor of doing something that gives the citizens of Lincoln City an idea at a high level, and then they can drill down to the detail that we all pore over every year. So I would, I would make a motion that if, as long as we would not only put the budget as we see it, but add some high-level information, you know, maybe some pie charts, a few of those things, that, you know, one picture's worth a thousand words. I think it would be a wonderful idea.
Yeah, stating it in the, in the budget message, the total amount, and providing a computer upgrade and, you know, annual system.
I don't know if, Debbie, maybe you can speak to this, the current software or however you load, just the, the current budget, if you need an upgrade to the software or not.
To, to kind of do a budget summary where you've got pie charts and showing where the revenue comes from and where it's going in kind of a high level, we would not need additional software to do that. That's just, you know, putting every, putting a report together, a PDF together. If you're talking about being able to query and drill down on data, that's what would need a software. But if you want a summary and then you can, you know, go to the detail page that we already have posted, we've got, we've got what we need for that now.
I, I support the idea of that.
And we don't really need a motion for that. As, as time permits, the, the city can work on that.
Okay. So the next item would be on that, on Ms. Hinton's million dollar list to the, it'd be also number six on page three of that. Add Kevlar backing behind the desk and a panic button to the library. Affected fund would be the General Fund.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that we add a Kevlar backing behind the desk and a panic button at the library.
From the million dollar purchase, not from the General. Well, is it, it's listed as.
There's two options that you have on this, though it's actually three. You could take it from the million dollars and that would affect other uses of it. You could reduce your unappropriated fund balance, or you could reduce another expense somewhere else in the library.
So the mil, the unappropriated fund balance is the million dollars?
No.
No.
No, it is the eight point six million dollars.
That's the unappropriated fund. Six point eight is the unappropriated fund balance, correct?
Unappropriated.
That's that number that we want to be at six million. So there's.
Yeah, it's six, sorry.
Six, six.
Six million, eight hundred and some odd dollars.
So that's the amount that, that.
Six, eight oh five.
Anytime you hear me say unappropriated fund balance, that's what we're talking about.
And you, you want that to be six million.
That's what I prefer.
So we have an eight hundred thousand dollars sitting here, we have a million dollars of, I don't know what that, what that's called.
You have a million dollars that is already accounted for as an expense, you're just trying to decide if that's the right expense.
What do you want to call that?
Million dollars.
Million dollars.
I figured out any other name to call it up in the million dollars.
We'll call it a million bucks.
So Kevin, what would you like, where are you proposing that?
I propose we take it out of the nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollar. Since we're spending nine thousand, five hundred of it now, yeah.
Okay, so he's proposing it become paid for by the million dollars.
I second.
If we have a motion, a second, we'd like this discussion. Okay. Mr. Anderson.
I, I guess, I'm a little, I'm all for security and stuff in the library. What I'm hung up on is us deciding what the best security measures are. And I would even bump it to ten thousand dollars.
Whoa.
Just loosen the words to security measures, to give those who are smarter than we, not that Ms. Hinton doesn't know at her suggestion, but I think it was more of a suggestion of security rather than specific type of stuff.
I made it, but yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Her list.
Yes, my suggestion. And it was exactly that.
I actually said it before he did.
Yeah, it was safety at the front desk.
Blimey.
I wonder if we could change the motion to be, you know, security measures and here's a dollar allotment.
Mr. Chair, I withdraw my motion.
And we have to withdraw the second.
Whoa, doggies. I want to speak on the last one.
It's been withdrawn, so.
I'll speak anyway. Okay, everybody, listen up. So the idea of the Kevlar backing and the panic button, I didn't make that up, Riley said it after I did, so I have to defend it. That actually came from a police officer who is in charge of safety and he reviewed the library and this was his idea of just basic measures for safety for the, for the library. So these are the basic. I mean, we could go up to probably a million dollars to redesign the entire library and box it in, but I don't think the library folks want that. And, and so this is like very, very basic. And this didn't come from me, I didn't make it up. This was, I can't remember the police officer's name who provided that, but that's where I got it and that's where Riley got it from me.
Thanks.
So that's it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I share Dick's concern. When I looked through these proposals of how to potentially use the unappropriated fund balance or the million dollars, there are a couple of proposals in here that deal with this building's security measures. It's not just the library. And I would love to see an expert, security expert, look at this building in this day and age and see what the entire building might need to secure its employees and the library a lot better.
Which ties into the next one, the cameras and all that stuff. So, yeah, which is the number seven on Ms. Hinton's list of the camera system for this, this building. Was it on number seven?
I mean, that's where the numbers came.
Oh, seven on Ron's list?
Mm-hmm, that's where those numbers came from.
Well, maybe if I make a motion to, and somebody can fill in the dollar amount, that we undertake a contract to hire a security expert to come in here and review it, report back to the council, and then vote on the specifics of what the recommendations might be from that expert.
You know, I'm wondering, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering if we couldn't somehow sew number six and number seven together.
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Great idea. He did come late.
Welcome, Mr. Wood. Okay, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but before there, perhaps maybe a second, could we ask the chief to come and talk with us about this?
We didn't ask him to, I mean.
Could we ask him?
I mean, it.
Yes, it's up to you.
He needs an armless chair.
Yeah, they got a maintenance.
We need some chairs.
I just.
Or stools.
Start the timer.
So I believe the police officer you were talking about who did the threat assessment in the library was Sergeant Eskridge of the Police Department. In viewing that threat assessment, he made some recommendations. They not be, they may not be the best recommendations, they may have been the most cost-efficient type of recommendations.
Did he also look at the entire building? Do you know?
No, he just concentrated on the library.
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed.
Yes, ma'am.
Would Sergeant Eskridge, would you?
I would think that you would want to hire a security specialist. We're more in the reactive mode and security specialists are more in the proactive mode.
I apologize for asking you to speak.
That's okay.
Thank you, chief. I got lots of cough drops, so we didn't go.
Okay.
Did Dee make a motion?
I don't.
No.
No.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's been discussed that we combine six and seven.
Ma'am, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Am I interrupting you?
Uh, no.
Okay. So regarding number seven, what I had in mind on it, where it was similar but different, if I were to write it out, this would be security cameras installed at hotspots and soft targets. The soft target would be like the library and City Hall. And you would have, you put, security cameras were public restrooms that have a history of vandalism, library, City Hall, and select areas of Highway 101. These would be monitored by the dispatch center, which would add value to the dispatch center without having to hire additional employees.
Okay, this is just for Lincoln Hall. This is just for this building. Is that, are you saying something different?
I'm saying my, my proposal actually goes outside these movies to problem areas like the restrooms that are getting constantly vandalized.
Okay.
Okay. One of the advantages is it gives our dispatch center a competitive advantage. And for years, we've struggled, do we, do we send it to another city to do or do we do it ourselves? And this would add value and it would keep living wages in Lincoln City rather than having to go out of town if we ever made that decision. So, and the expense, you know, you can go slow or fast as you wish, you can just add it one at a time or try to bite the whole bullet. So, anyway, that's why I mentioned that, because it actually was a little more, what I had in mind was a little more than what Ron had set up there.
Okay.
Very similar.
Okay. No, he's just saying what it was.
Yeah, it was just me talking.
Okay, so if we can break that into two parts, the rest of the city and this building.
I'll make a motion to take a hundred thousand dollars out of the million and put it into a appropriate fund called security. And, you know, primarily the City Hall, but, you know, restrooms and others. But buried in that is to get a recommendation from an expert and then it, it gives us nine hundred thousand or ninety thousand or something for parts, based on the recommendation. So it would include, a hundred thousand is the dollar amount, budget amount, it would include getting a specialist to advise us what measures to take, primarily first in the City Hall building, and then, you know, having money left over, money after that study to actually implement.
Mr. Chair.
Has been a motion?
Second.
I, I thought we had a motion on the floor, Mr. Ritchie.
I thought he made a motion too earlier.
No, I did not make a motion, but I said I would make a motion.
I didn't, yeah.
Okay.
If it, if it, if it had certain guidelines.
So just give me a moment to catch up.
Yes.
The motion, the second motion that was made that both withdrew, who, who were the two that made the motion? Was it you, Kevin?
I made the first one and then withdrew.
And Amanda withdrew.
And then Amanda, okay.
Mr. Ritchie did not make a motion.
So then.
And now Mr. Anderson has made a motion.
Okay.
And Ms. Hinton has seconded.
Thank you.
So there's been a motion and just, and a second, we have discussion. No? Well, I would like, yeah, I'll say, I've, I've sat in front of a screen monitoring stationary cameras in parking lots in a building, many, many, you know, we had many cameras and it is very difficult and it is very time-consuming. And so to think that dispatch can do dispatch. it is very difficult, and it is very time-consuming. And so, to think that dispatch can do dispatch and actively monitor or assess threats or something like that, I think it's outside of that ability. I was in security and worked that for two and a half years, and we did dispatch and cameras at the same time. And it is very difficult to have both of those things going on. Yes, there is downtime. Yes, you can look at them, but it's extremely difficult, and it was difficult for myself and other people to have that ability to watch something active and dispatch at the same time. So, I'm not for a citywide camera surveillance system and with dispatch being responsible for that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If Mr. Ward doesn't mind, let's deal with this building and citywide cameras in two separate actions.
Well.
Because I think we're trying, I think we're trying to solve two separate issues here, so, well, then I'll refer to Dick.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if the expert, the key in that hundred thousand is you hire an expert to advise you. He may not, he may agree with you that cameras aren't the answer. But I want to make sure, whatever comes up, because it'll, you know, all we're doing is putting money in a budget item. Council will still decide how the money's spent. So, I'm trying to kill two birds with one stone. Get the expert in here to take care of the library, what we need to do, because I agree, have money available there to do that. And, you know, and then what else does the expert tell us about our city, our hot points or soft points? So, it may or may not be outside the City Hall.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Either if we're talking cameras in the building or cameras outside of the building, they're still going to have to be monitored. And my question, I guess, would be to Chief Killian, whether or not he thinks that dispatch could handle the monitoring of it.
Mr. Chair, I think we're going outside of our bounds here, but that's not our purview. I would rather not.
I agree.
I would rather not. So, there's been a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Does anybody else would like to discuss about this particular thing with the clarification that it is mainly for, in a.
The City Hall.
City Hall, and the money could implement the recommendations based upon a review that council would approve after that review has been done.
They'd review the study.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. May we have a roll call, please?
Deanna?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Dee Ritchie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yep.
Anderson?
Yep.
Judy?
Yes.
And Amanda?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So, that is items six and seven now off the list. We'll go down to number nine. This is a, I'm sorry, this is the camera system for, I'm sorry, recording, new recording system, which all that entails, for chamber to improve quality and bring the system current. So, okay, my, sorry, he's leaving. My children are leaving, I'm sorry. That's why I'm waving. Sorry.
Actually, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we continue, so that Debbie can add the totals, I need to make an announcement. The very first motion that was for the director position did pass.
Did not pass.
Did pass.
Did not, did not.
Hold on, hold on.
I, we've had this problem before in our budget meetings, and I had it checked. And according to OAR 150-294.336 and ORS 294.414, any budget committee action requires the affirmative vote of a majority of the total budget committee members, membership. For example, only, if only six members of a ten-member committee are present, they have the quorum necessary to meet, but they all must vote in favor of any proposed action to achieve the required majority.
So, it's a majority of the positions not present?
Majority of the total.
The total.
Doesn't matter who's here.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize. That was.
So, if it was, so if eight of us were here, all eight of us would have to vote yes in order for it to pass.
Yes, you're correct. I apologize.
Thank you for checking.
So, Kathy, the motion passed?
No, did not.
No, the motion did not pass.
It was seven to four, correct?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that. So, the next one is number nine, and that is the recording system, however you want to label that, for council chambers. That would include cameras, recording, archiving, bandwidth. A system upgrade has been proposed for one hundred thousand dollars.
I don't know where that came from.
Question? Yes, sir.
I don't remember hearing, I've been at all the meetings, and I don't think I fell asleep. I don't remember hearing any discussion about this. I don't remember hearing Ron ask about it. I don't remember having any discussion when we, in any of our meetings about it. So, where did this come from?
Counselor Hinton.
Yeah, Hinton suggested it, and I, I don't know where else that it would have been.
Just here.
Yeah.
And it's been in there. It looks like a big mess on here, but the only part of number nine on Ron's memo to us, the only part that I would like you to look at is the actual, that new cameras upgrade system for recording, so that hundred thousand dollars. The other parts of it have been separated out.
It says budget page seventy-one. Six lines up in the bottom. Okay, so that's what's up on the table. Is there a motion?
I brought it up, so I'll move it.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second to spend a hundred thousand dollars of the million dollars to improve our camera, recording, everything that's necessary to put on and have our meetings here in chambers. Discussion.
I'm caught by surprise as well. I know we don't like the mics, you know, because of, it doesn't seem to pick up. You have to eat the mic. But I guess I haven't had any complaints of cameras and recording data. So, I've kind of had a loss as to the need for, it feels more like a nice-to-have because there's a million dollars sitting there versus need-to-have.
That's right.
And so, I'm not in favor of that motion.
Thank you.
Do you want me to speak?
I don't know. Who wants, I want whoever wants to.
I have had complaints, and if you are watching us at home or on streaming or anything, it, we're really hard to see and hear. I mean, it is not a good system. Those cameras, I can't remember how old they are, but they're really old. Everything can be upgraded. Their system here is antiquated, and I don't think it would cost a hundred thousand dollars, but that was, it's probably closer to seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty?
I mean, no, no.
Yeah, we're going to have laser camera.
It's probably twenty-five thousand dollars less. But I don't know. This was just a best guess, but.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I guess this kind of falls in the same vein in my mind as the security issue, and that is, you know, I guess I haven't seen any information that shows that new cameras was actually approved, but I don't think, I don't think the answer is that. And whether we got to see that, like the security issue, needs to be, thank you, Mr. Wright, further by, whether the, like the security issue, something, I don't know.
So, so, well, there is, yeah, if we want to amend the motion to maybe have a study done with the, I mean, that could be, that could be part of it, instead of just saying, well, we're just going to buy new things without that. But.
That'd be fine. I will amend my motion.
So amended?
Yes.
So, seconded?
What?
To have, to include a study with the opportunity, with the availability to fund it pending the study, similar to the security assessment.
For still a hundred thousand dollars?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Doesn't the city have an IT person?
It does.
And wouldn't that IT person be part of their regular purview of what they are in charge of is, like, the sound system in here and the cameras in here? So, if they had a recommendation, wouldn't we assume that they would bring that forward if they thought there was a need for that? Well, shouldn't we trust our, sorry, this is a discussion. Shouldn't we trust our staff members to do what it is their job is?
Sure, but do we know how comfortable they feel about saying, hey, we got a million dollars and we can spend a hundred thousand dollars here? I don't know their level of comfort of saying, hey, our stuff is old.
That's why we have a city manager.
Sure. But.
And it did take quite a while to get the new microphones. I might say it was city council who asked for that, wasn't it?
The microphones?
Mm-hmm.
So, it was, I mean, they're, I'm sure they're going to make do with what they have and make the best of it, and they do. Absolutely. I mean, we have an online show. It's recorded and all that things. So, you're absolutely right.
I'll throw that.
Sure.
Oh, repeat the motion.
One more.
What is the motion now?
The motion now is to, to study the, what'd you call it, technical equipment? Technical equipment for, for video, I don't know all the technical terms, so I'm having a difficult, yeah, the technology.
Technology assessment.
Thank you, a technology assessment for the chamber meetings, I guess. Council chamber.
Council chamber.
With the hundred thousand in the bank.
Correct. With the remainder to be able to implement things that are suggested, if anything is. Are you satisfied, Mr. Anderson? I mean, with that, under the understanding.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't get it wrong.
Thank you. Whoa, whoa.
Out of my space, buddy.
Mr. Chair.
Who had seconded the?
Ms. Casper.
Taking for a vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
No.
Dee Ritchie?
No.
Susan?
No.
Kip?
Yes.
Dick?
No.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
No.
Deanna?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Number eleven, I brought up the municipal court. Since I know that that is a lot of money, and I don't know if we had an assessment done to see whether or not it would be viable or long-term, I would like to entertain a study to see if that would be better for the community and the everything total. Not necessarily a straight across the board, let's fund it. So, I'm open to talk about that before making a motion. And I have no ego in this, so. I don't. I mean, it's not. I mean, it's really not.
Well, I'll give you my point of view on this.
Sure.
I'm never generally against studying an idea that may have merit. I just recall that this has been discussed many years before.
Right.
And the, I don't remember specific numbers, but I do recall that the staff wrote some numbers up back then, and it didn't really make any sense, because it has more effects on what you're dealing with. If you're proposing to deal with misdemeanors or something of that nature, it has other effects with respect to possibly jail transport, back and forth between the courts, and you have other costs that you have to consider in that sort of thing, too. I'm not saying maybe if your study would show something different, or at least then you're out, the part numbers could be forever, next ten years, they'll be.
Yeah, absolutely. No, no, and it was with, it was tied in with the new police station and all that new things, and having that more ability to do things more here and not go to Newport, and not push our police officers to Newport, and having more Lincoln City-based stuff with the hopes of, you know, getting that. And I know it's not like a moneymaker, you know, but that's not what it was to do. So, where I was coming from. Anybody else? Um, well. Sure, why not? I make a motion to spend fifteen thousand dollars to study expenses, challenges, and opportunities to upgrade to a municipal court. No? All right. That one dies. Next. What? No one seconded.
No, 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 no.
No, no, that was a soft, that was away from the mighty.
That was a murder.
See, it does pick up.
I heard you whisper.
It was not a seconded.
Okay, the next one is on the million dollars. It says a number twenty-one on Ron's list, and that is a reduce the transfer to public arts to fifty thousand dollars from two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I, it's, one says Ward, and one says Casper, so not.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is, that's Casper.
Okay.
I was mixing them together.
So, it's Casper. Okay.
Chair?
Sir?
Can I, I don't know if make a motion or suggest, you started as a suggestion. Can I suggest that we table this until we get, since that is fifty thousand out of a two hundred and fifty thousand, there's a large pool there, the million dollars we're spending. And we've already made some adjustments in what that million dollars look like, and we've got a bunch of other suggestions to go through. I'm asking if we can table this part until we get clear back down to the end and wrap back around to see how we've spent the million dollars, because there's still, on the rest of Ron's pages, there's still a bunch of spending items that we have to figure out if we're going to pass them, where they're going to fit in the budget.
So, I hear you.
That's my question.
And I say no to that. I'd rather just go through these one-time purchases and see if that's anything else, and then go, because these aren't necessarily the million-dollar fund.
That one is.
No, 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 these, the rest of the list.
Correct, but they could, they could move into the million-dollar fund.
Right.
A bunch of those could fall into the, a number of those, these are not ongoing things, and they are one-time things that could fall into the million-dollar fund if we approve them, because if we approve these, we're going to have to figure out how to pay for them.
Right.
And the million-dollar fund could be part of paying for the ones of these that we approve.
Right. We've spent a hundred thousand dollars so far of the million.
Mr. Chair, if you want to, you know, if you think it's a good idea to move that down, then what we would do on the approved budget is we'd increase that to one point two million. See what I'm saying?
No.
Where are you finding this money?
That's, no.
He's not buying.
This is what was in the budget so far. This is what you would change. If you were to reduce this one, okay, that was fifty thousand, you go here, that would be one point two million.
The transfer from the arts came from the hundred, the one million. So, how does, how does, take.
This is the budget. This is what you're working. This is, this is, you are, you are filling in the blanks. And so, if you were to, that would actually increase that to one point two million.
Uh, no, I disagree.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so. It's coming from the million dollars.
It's instead of.
And so, we're trying, we're not spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're spending fifty thousand dollars from it. So, there is an extra two hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to know what we think. I'd, I'd like to know what we think we are buying for two-hundred thousand dollars.
Well, the, in the budget-
Or two-hundred-and-fifty, whatever the number is.
Correct, in the budget for the arts, there was a, it said three-hundred-and-three thousand dollars, I believe, um, of purchases for art, and it, and I, and it doesn't go further into that.
Uh, it wasn't three-hundred-and-three thousand dollars, I think it was twenty-five thousand that's in the budget. Two-hundred-and-fifty. Two-hundred-and-fifty is what we did out of the million.
I know, but there was a-
There was a starting figure of something much smaller than that.
Right.
When he first, when we first saw the budget, there was a starting figure much smaller.
Correct, correct.
Twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand, something like that.
Let's, let's see.
They've just, do they, can remember, we were told something about the art master plan that you done?
I think it was described as a placeholder, but it said purchases. Okay, so here it was, um, beginning fund balance is thirty-two thousand with a transfer of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, gave total resources of three-hundred-and-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, art purchases for three-hundred-and-three thousand, four hundred dollars with contracted services of ten thousand dollars for total expenditures of three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars with a ending fund balance of zero dollars.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to repeat my question, I'd like to know what we're using that money to buy specifically. How, how important is this? Do we need better roads, or? Or, or house the homeless, or do we wanna buy some art?
Or some sidewalks along one-on-one where there's spaces where there are none? I, I mean, and, and yes, also, so I mean, all of that is very important. I don't know if that's something that Mr. Chandler can answer at this very moment, what's the three-hundred-and-three thousand dollar purchases for art would be.
Not until after they finish their art master plan.
So.
So, so I think the, the question, there really isn't any thing identified. If you're inclined, at least the way I'm thinking about it, if, if I'm inclined that I wanna make sure the committee has some money to, to buy some art while the normal funding li- uh, revenue line falls in there. One way to do it, and I think that's what Mr. Chandler was trying to suggest, is, is what's a good level? There's two-hundred-and-fifty in there now, you know, is fifty thousand reasonable, is a hundred thousand reasonable, and remove the rest of it. Up, up to, you know, take it out of, and, and just set it aside, much to Kevin's point, that we're all gonna, we're all dipping into that million dollars. So in essence, you just leave X dollars in there. Cause two-fifty's there now.
Oh, two, two-fifty's been proposed.
It's in the budget.
Right.
So, as, it'll stay there unless somebody makes a motion to move something out, that, that's what I'm-
Right.
Suggest.
Sir?
I move that we move two-hundred thousand dollars out of that fund back into the, yet to be decided, and that we leave fifty thousand dollars in the public art fund.
Okay.
I think that's what Judy.
But, I mean, so there's been a motion?
Second.
All right, so motion and second, we have discussion?
That's what the intent of that was, to decrease the budget, I guess I worded it improperly.
Okay.
Reduce it to two-hundred thousand and only leave fifty thousand in the budget, so, thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
In the million dollar allocation.
So what would end up happening by this motion? The total budget for percentage of arts would be, would not be three-hundred, it would not be three-hundred-and-three, thirty-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars, that would be reduced by two-hundred. So it'd be a hundred-and-thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Sorry, yes. And the million dollars now has two-hundred thousand dollars to do something else with.
That's the confusing part, because the, the million dollars mentally is already divided by all these entities, we're just calling it a million.
Correct, but so far, from that million dollars, we have spent, even though it's in the budget, a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And now proposed another fifty thousand dollars.
Just got freed up.
Two-hundred thousand dollars.
Two-hundred thousand just got freed up.
Correct, sorry.
Under the motion.
Under this motion.
Under the vote, thank you.
Okay, discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I mean, I just got the way what, um, Dick was saying is, is it's a question of what you think the level for arts and, and arts funding should be. I'm not completely comfortable with, with cutting it back up far. I think that the arts master plan is gonna cost some money to finish up for one. I think that the, um, uh, I know public art is pretty expensive. So, uh, you know, my, my feeling would be not to cut down that much.
Okay. Question?
Thank you.
When, when is this so-called master plan going to be finished? December. December? And then it'll have to be brought back to the council for specific purchases? And/or contracted out to buy those purchases?
I believe so. I believe co- council approves the spending of the money.
In years past, it has been, I don't, yeah.
My, my question is, there's been some suggestion that issues of a new logo and wayfinding signs, the sign and entrance improvements, um, and public art could all come out of the C B fund. And is that correct or no?
Only if it fits within the definition the charter allows for the use of TANZI room tax money. And no, I don't believe all of those could.
What can and what can't?
You say your list again, and I'll tell you what I think can and can't, based on that.
Well, it's listed in your memo. Yeah, um, the highlighted yellow.
Oh, yeah, well, that was, that was Deanna suggesting it, that's not Mr. Chandler.
Okay, so I'm wondering if that's possible.
Um, I don't believe the wayfinding signs could. Perhaps some of the entrance improvements, but I don't know that all of it could. And I don't believe the public art could, and, no, I don't believe the public art could.
Mr. Chandler? I mean, is, is that, those are hard no's, or the, those are-
That's my question, who, who, who would have a hard yes or hard no on those? If, if you're, you're saying I don't believe-
Ultimately, the city council will interpret their own charter. But, uh, if they were to ask me those, my recommendation on it, that's what I would tell you then on how it fits, but ultimately, they have to determine what the charter says and what it doesn't say.
Okay, any more discussion on this, uh, reduction? All right, may we have a vote, please, or a rule call, please?
Casper?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug? Chester?
Yes.
De' Richie?
Yes.
Susan?
No.
Kip?
Yes.
And Dick?
No.
Motion carries.
The next, oh, no.
So that means we've allocated fifty thousand dollars?
Correct, to this, to that, yes. An increase.
Fifty thousand dollars increase.
A one-time increase of fifty thousand dollars.
You know, if I, if-
What, what, okay, what we just did was, where it says, transfer from general fund, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on page fifty, that will now be fifty thousand dollars.
And I wonder if I could.
Yeah, sure.
That, the idea with, I was hoping to be helpful, I'm not sure that I have been now, but by putting this list together, um, this was instead of the five, um-
Transfers.
The five, well, let me see if I can find the right language. The five items, um, that were provided in the message, in Ron's message to us. So it's not in addition to it, and I think there's some confusion, it's not in addition to those, um, five, um, allocated things, it would be in place of it.
So you're just allocating, your proposal on the sheet is just reallocating the million dollars?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Based on what I've been hearing from people and my own thinking.
Okay. Yes, yes, sir.
Can I record, could, could I add the numbers on that last vote?
Could you repeat that question?
What was the number for the last vote, number of yeses, number of no's?
Eight yes, three no.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So the next one is a, is a new list, and I think that's what ties into Ms. Hinton's suggestion as far as reallocating those monies. I don't know if we should, instead of going to the new ones, maybe we should talk about the five that Mr. Chandler had suggested. The economic development toolbox, the new logo and wayfinding signs, sign and entrance improvements, public art and street improvement. We now have reduced the public art to fifty thousand dollars. And, um, the, I would say, the economic development toolbox had been the, the first one on his list of five, of a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar increase, I'm sorry, one-time transfer. You totally lost me. Okay, instead of going to Ms. Hinton's new things that had a reallocation of those funds, maybe it would be best to go over the ones that Mr. Chandler had suggested, uh, where he had transferred that money. Instead of just reality, going off of Ms. Hinton's, going from the original budget, saying yea or nay, and if then, going to the new suggestions.
I, I would come back with my earlier suggestion, that is, we set both of those aside, we do everything else on this list to make sure that we've got funds for that before we decide how we're gonna split up the million dollars we haven't spent yet.
It, you know, it, I guess that comes into the other thing as far as just generally discussion, general discussion, make a motion to approve, or if we come to a soft consensus, to hold it in place, and then at the end, vote based on the input, M W inputs.
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying, you've actually got two parts. The first is any amendments that you want to make. Once you make the amendments, you'll look at how it's affected the budget completely, and then, uh, you'll, uh, amend it again or approve it as you've amended it. Does that make sense?
Correct.
So let's say, for example, when we talk about the million dollars, okay, let's say, for example, that you ended up with one-point-one million dollars worth of, worth of expenses, and you say, I really wanna keep all of that one-point-one million dollars. That means a hundred thousand dollars is gonna have to come from somewhere else in the budget.
Right.
So the, the million dollars is there because it was just a lump sum, there was an extra amount, but if, you know, like I said, if you come out with something that's more than that, then the question is, where will you decrease somewhere else?
Right, that could be from the unappropriate contingency or the, that, um, can, or the contingency amount can be reduced.
Yes, sir.
Or we could raise the tax rate. That's one of our choices, that's one of the things we vote on.
And we're gonna vote on that, plus, is it just the sewer, or the sewer and water? Because earlier you said just sewer. Sewer and water rates. You said we're be, be doing two things, well, three things.
What you're approving is a, is a property tax revenue that is required to be collected in order to make our current debt payment.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And, if I may.
Sure.
Okay, one more, um, piece of info for me is when I was putting this list together, I did go through Ron's list and pulled out all of the one-time expenses that I could find. That's why I was trying to find a home for the one-time type purchases, and that's why I put them under the million dollar bucket.
Things that could be applied to the one-time purchase.
Exactly, that's where the list came from.
Okay.
Question, a clarification?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chandler on the list, on the Mr. Chandler list on here. The items you have listed, like eliminate the cadet program, fifty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, is that money in the budget right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is in the budget. Uh, yes, yes, if it's saying eliminated, it's an and, yes.
Okay, well, I'm not- I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to going through this list of, of twenty, twenty-two items. Or that's been reduced by this list already. Do we have a consensus? I mean, I don't wanna just-
Now, let's start with one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, all right, so back to Mr. Chandler's list, um, number one, adding the marijuana tax revenue to the general fund, it's estimated to be five thousand dollars. I suggested it, I will make a motion that the marijuana tax revenue be added to our general fund. Motion in second, and that was by Mr. Ritchie. May I have a discussion?
Could you give us a reason why bother?
Cause it's not been declared where to put it, is that I understood?
Well, we don't know how much, this is just a-
Yeah, just saying.
So, so why worry about a revenue source, it'll come in anyway, why budget it? I mean, it-
So we can use it?
Five thousand is-
I don't know, does it, the way I understood it is, the way I understood it, is there wasn't a, where it's gonna go. I didn't, wasn't concerned about the amount of money, just where that money, that, those taxes would be put, that's why I said it.
General fund is the answer. Yeah, but the, the key on this is what Council Hinton just mentioned, uh, five thousand dollars, don't know if that's the right amount or not, but if you want to use it, you have to have budgeted for it. If you just, if it's just gonna be the revenue and you're not going to worry about it, then, then you don't need the motion, because it will just simply be added as, as, whatever it is. But if you want to use it, then you do need to budget for how you're going to use it. Question, are, are, is the budget gonna be prepared where this is gonna be a line item under revenue source? If you, if you add this now, yes. Oh, in the future? Yes, once we know, so beginning next year, when we have a better idea of how much we're going to be bringing in, then yes, we will add a line item to it.
So either way, it's going to be added?
Ultimately, yes, at least by, at least for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Uh, this will go in as a, a, simply a revenue that we receive, an unbudgeted revenue, and that happens. If, if we were pressed for no reserve and no balance, you know, ending balances and stuff, we, we've got money, I mean, so, I, I'd leave it alone until next budget where you'll have a- And, and maybe then we'll have a better idea, and council or budget committee or whoever's authorized can have some time to think about where they wanna direct, if they wanna direct the money to some pay, place specific, or just to the general fund. But, but it seems a little bit quick, right, tonight, to-
Yeah, well, I-
That's, I hear you.
I misunderstood when it was proposed, I would like to rescind my motion, please. Okay, so, number two, um, we already talked about, number three, we're gonna talk about it again? No. Uh, number three is add a quarterly ma- mail, I'm sorry, add a quarterly mailing to the utility bills. I think that maybe would be with, with the utility bills, or in a way to inform citizens or property owners, I don't-
Are you asking me? I'll explain it.
Thank you.
It was my request initially to, um, send a quarterly newsletter out to, um, out to our citizens to let them know what the city is doing, how their, you know, how their money's being spent essentially, and what progress we're making on big items, and, and, um, just a way to, to check in with people, let them know what's going on.
Are you making a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All right, so there's been a motion and a second, we have discussion, please, for this, um, item. Yes, sir.
Lucky.
May I?
Yes.
Okay. Originally, my original, original idea was to send out a separate mailer, and they're not that expensive, to everybody with an update of what's happening and going on in the city. And this isn't a new idea. Many, many, many cities provide updates to their citizens, and they can be very nicely done, and they are read. And I agree that if it's stuffed in a, in with your bill, you may not read it. And that part of this was not my idea because I don't, you know, I have experienced in my future life of letting people know information via that process, and they wanted something sent to them outside of their bill. So, but this was a combination of, I think, Mr. Anderson and, and Ms. Casper, and it's all rolled up into one idea here, so it's changed a little bit. But I would also like to say that in talking with people, in my ward at least, not everybody has, has the availability to look it up on the internet. So we say that just nonchalantly because most of us do that. That's not the case for everybody. But it is the case that everybody is paying a sewer bill and a water bill, and they don't know how their money's being spent. And I've heard a lot of that, so that's the genesis of the idea.
Again, I just might point out that what you're approving is a dollar amount. The method could change as the council wants to change it. So if the council decides to go with the utility billing, we do it that way. If the council decide to do a separate mailing, we do it that way. So you're just, so what you're looking at is a dollar amount.
Mr. Ritchie.
Mr. Chandler, who's the lucky person on your staff that's gonna write this?
We will work that out with the city council when the time comes.
And there won't be any increase in personnel costs as a result, or?
No, this is only, this is only the cost of, for mailing it.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, but I'm getting a message that they cannot hear Doug Holbrook, and they cannot hear Susan Walkie at all, and they're wondering if there's a problem with microphones. It doesn't sound like it's working. Shall we move these over one?
I can share.
Is this one working?
It is.
Is this one working?
I'm a rock star.
Sounds better. Guess that was why it was hidden.
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if it was Dee or Kevin who brought up, we've heard earlier in the budget of a news splitting, a PR taking on some public relations responsibility in administration, and half-time person taking that. I, I don't recall, so the question would be, I don't recall a, a budget for that kind of activity. Personnel, but maybe not the activity. So my question is, could a newsletter, websites, whatever vehicles you use for public relations, fit in that area? And could we modify this, you know, to, to not be a newsletter, but to give this department the funding to better promote the activities of the city that Ms. Hinton is talking about?
The, the person that you named is correct. That's, just my first thought, that's who would be doing that. Again, you're looking at a dollar amount that would be for a mailing. Ultimately, I will be bringing back something to the city council to discuss the best way to do that. And it may be a mailing with the bills, it may be a different mailing, it may be something that I haven't even thought of, we haven't thought of yet.
Well, excuse me. I guess I'm, I'm trying to get out of the detail, quite frankly. So if you find me fighting to, you know, not, not give acknowledgement to a newsletter or a website or anything else, but give staff the funding and ability to make the action, because, you know.
That's what this motion does, Dick.
No, this motion is two thousand dollars for newsletter.
But what Dr. Chandler just, Dr., Mr. Chandler just said is, it's, what we're doing is appropriating money to his staff to create some sort of a communication vehicle, and that'll depend on what the city council does. That's what he just said. That's he said, he just said, this is what this motion, what you're saying is what this motion accomplishes.
Okay, I think that's correct.
Well, again, I, I guess I'm, I'm, if I'm correct, there wasn't dollars in that city administration budget to, to do PR activity.
Yes, there was a new, a new person that's.
No, salary, yeah, salary. I mean, mailings. So, so I, I'm trying to make sure.
Yeah, that's that.
I'm sure.
Assistance, right.
Yeah, and so, you know, because the two thousand, I hate to be spending money, but, you know, I would up that if, to make this a live department so that it's doing what Council Hinton's talking about, is how do you get the word out? Because we are lax in that. I, I agree with her. But I don't think two thousand dollars is gonna do the job, especially, I'll tell you, do the job if you were having me do it, because it wouldn't get done. So it'd be fine. So I wanna make sure there's tools there. And that's, that's my concern, is that, you know, and I, I'm sorry, I just don't remember that budget, whether there was resources there for.
The, the resources that would, that would go to that would be absorbed in the budget itself. There wasn't a specific thing that said PR. It just came out of the department, so it'd be in an office and materials and all of that kinda stuff.
When you were building the budget for that department, though.
We were.
Did, did you build in some stuff for, that would, so maybe you don't need this two thousand then?
I was not anticipating a ma, this type of a mailing, so.
He could use it.
I could use it.
Yeah, I mean, that, is that, I thought I read one. Now this ties into those assistants and that picture that you drew with the three different people, that's now gonna be two or one or whatever. Are you still in this amended budget proposing that the executive assistant to the city manager performs PR for the city of Lincoln City using part of their forty-hour-a-week time?
Under the, under the budget that is before you.
Correct.
It would be to hire a new employee. If you were to hire an assistant for the attorney, then yes. It depends on your decision on an attorney.
And that's part of this proposal we haven't got to yet? Yeah, yeah, I, right, I, I.
So, so I guess my answer is either way, I am planning on having somebody who's working PR. The question is, just depends on what you want to do with an attorney's assistant.
Okay, so anyway, the back to the motion on the floor is two thousand dollars for city council, out of the, two thousand dollars to increase printing.
Perhaps we should amend it, given this last discussion. Perhaps we should say, if this is all right for the, for, by the seconder, Mr. Kevin, is that two thousand dollars would be available to the city manager's budget for outreach. So that could cover all means of information gathering and outreach. Would that work?
I don't agree.
He doesn't agree?
So you would please rescind your mo, your second.
Would you like to make a motion?
If she's changing her motion, I'm rescinding my second.
Thank you. So please restate, rescind your motion, and re.
Okay, I'll rescind my motion.
And now make a new motion, please. Will you make a new motion?
I would move what you just moved, that we have two thousand dollars for a printed piece that goes out quarterly. That's what I believe that we need.
Okay, I'll second it, because that was the original.
Wait, wait, are you making a motion?
I just did.
Okay. I just wanna be clear.
Yeah.
Thank you. And she's second. So, there's a lion tamer down the wa, I'm just kidding. May we have, any more discussion?
It just was made. We haven't seconded, we haven't got any discussion.
She seconded his, she, he.
No, but there's, now there's discussion, not more discussion, right?
Yeah, discussion.
So, discussion. So I remember a survey that went out, citywide survey, finding out what our constituents wanted and needed. And that document was very well received and very well read, and I had a hell of a bang for the buck. It was about three grand.
And when was this done?
Ah, eight years ago.
Nineteen eighty-seven?
Yeah, it was since I've been here.
Yeah, it was.
Dick says it was ninety-four.
There was another one done, though.
Okay, anyway, moving, your point is. Point is.
The, the, the point is, is that when you just put a mailing in, like Doug had mentioned, that oftentimes it just gets thrown away for a, a really involvement piece, it might be a piece with a point, you know, where.
Right.
Your input could, counts, please check here.
Having all kinds, you send this back to us.
And in that case, I'd be willing to go more than she wants. Because I think it's, that cost us about three thousand bucks to do that, if my, my memory was correct. Anyway, just, I just threw that up just to make things messed up, okay?
All right, let's call for a vote.
And the vote was two thousand dollars for a mailing.
From where, from, how are you going to fund it? The city council budget or the depart, or the unappropriated fund balance?
Unappropriated fund balance.
Thank you.
Hinton?
Yes.
Ogland?
Yes.
Unbaum?
Yes.
Holbrook?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Dee Ritchie?
Yes.
Susan?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Casper?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is the hire the in-house auditor. I brought it up, so as I was looking at, if I can just say more about this. Our TRT compliance reviews are paid for by the TRT itself, and currently we're spending forty thousand dollars. That forty thousand dollars comes after the taxes collected by the city. I would propose that, that forty thousand dollars now, I don't know if it's, we can, but it would come from that point, that hundred and two thousand, eight thirty would come from that point of the TRT flow chart before it gets distributed to the general fund, to the balance and all that. And then it would affect subsequently the rest of where the money gets. As a way to ensure we have universal TRT compliance. That's what I'd like to talk about. I don't even know if you can do that.
Can you say that again?
Okay. On page four.
Yes.
Where it says TRT compliance reviews, forty thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's the money that we have spent for our contracted services.
Yes.
Can we use that at that point to pay for an in-house auditor?
I, I release those functions dedicated to just that function.
Correct, so that's where I would like to fund an in-house auditor to ensure that all, everything is being. I know I haven't made a motion, but I'm just talking about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just took question, then, what, what's an in-house auditor? A public employee with all benefits?
Correct. It's paid for a hundred percent by the TRT. Well, that's fine, I, I, clearly, but I mean, we are, it's Lincoln City, and I just feel like it's a joke that we have this rampant VRD problem, and it's like, you know, oh, Lincoln City and VRD. When I go and say I'm from Lincoln City and council, it comes all the time. So I think for me, as a way to have this universal checks and balances thing, that's how I feel about it.
Yes, I'm, Chairman, I'm at a loss, your rationale of, you know, from VRD problems to an auditor, doesn't match.
To check.
To check what?
To keep it all.
It's, there's not an issue around the money.
That we know of.
Well, based on the, based on the last audit, you got seven thousand dollars, I, I don't remember the, um, you know, between the overs and the shorts is.
Seven thousand nine hundred or something like that?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just.
It's a year.
Yeah. Hundred and six, one oh, one oh two eight thirty is what's been proposed.
Just to clarify if I could, the only function that they could, that, that, if you're funding it from the source, the only function that they could do is auditing of the quarterly returns. They couldn't do other VRD types of activities.
They could not?
No.
Well, then I wouldn't wanna do that.
Thank you, Debbie.
And I, and I don't know unless I ask, that's.
I didn't answer that question.
No, there was never, there was never a motion. I just wanted to talk about my idea of that. Publicly, absolutely.
Moving on?
Absolutely. Number five, we talked about. Number six, no, no motion. Number six, number seven has been checked. Number eight is the processing utility payments through paper payments to the office instead of using a lockbox. Ms. Hinton, I have your name here. Would you like to?
Where are we, sorry?
On page three, number eight.
Number eight. Yes. I had asked that payments, if payments could be made here in Lincoln City rather than having the paperwork trail, however, go to, I believe it's Utah at the moment, to keep the, keep the job here rather than farming it out. So that was the reason for the request. I don't understand lockbox, but Debbie does. So that's her, that's her language, not mine, but, um, so that was the request, and I would suggest it be an option two, which is on the top of page four. So I would move to bring this type of work in-house rather than farming it out, and to use option number two on top of page four to pay for it. Option two. Yes, increase the water fund, increase the sewer fund, and then for the offset, decrease the water fund and decrease the sewer fund, both in appropriated fund bal, um, balance contingency.
Decreasing all four?
I'm sorry?
Decreasing all four of those, correct?
No.
Well.
The bottom two. Or, or do I need to include?
Yeah.
You would, you would decrease contracted services because that's where it is now.
Oh, that's where it is now, sorry.
Okay. And the contingency fund appropriated balances.
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
Are we ready for discussion?
Uh, I don't, I wasn't cleared yet.
I made a motion.
Okay.
There's no second yet.
Okay. There's a motion and no second. To fund a, to change, to, to change one part-time employee to a full-time employee to be able to process utility payments in-house as opposed to sending them out to be processed. The difference, okay, okay, motion and seconded. Currently, that is a nine thousand dollar a month charge.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Hinton has stated that she would like to decrease, so the contracted services would be decreased by nine thousand, and each of the water and sewer funds would be reduced by sixteen and ten thousand respectively. and each of the water and sewer funds would be reduced by sixteen and ten thousand respectively to be able to fund this position.
So, we're going to spend thirty-six thousand dollars to save nine thousand dollars?
Uh, I don't believe that's what she was saying, but yeah, numerically, yes.
We're gonna- we're gonna save nine thousand dollars and spend thirty-six instead.
And provide another job in Lincoln City.
It was- it was save nine thousand to spend twenty-seven because we're already spending the nine thousand. Yes, it costs more, but it's not-
It costs more, but it brings a- a working- a job to-
Mr. Chair, why would we want to do that?
Ms. Hinton would like it to be, yeah, it was- it was an in-house, creating a full-time employee, and not be farmed out to a contracted service is the reasoning.
You don't have to like it. It was ju- it's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, let's, you know, keep the egos at bay. May we have a roll call, please?
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
No.
D Ritchie?
No.
Susan?
No.
Kip? Dick?
No.
Judy?
No.
Amanda?
No.
And Deanna?
Yep.
Motion fails.
All right. Number eleven, we talked about. Now, here, I think, is where we were speaking at number twelve as the higher a-
Ten. Excuse me?
Ten?
Sorry. Sorry to interrupt.
What are you- eight?
Ten.
Ten is at the bottom of page four.
Oh, I can count. Okay, um, this is, um, non-police staff should pay a portion of the membership dues to community center use. Ms. Hinton, you had brought this up.
I did, if I can remember. And I've been thinking about it, and, um... I'm not quite sure how to say it, but it's too, um... I could go backwards. Okay, I'm looking at ten percent because that didn't make it into the notes. I don't think I said it loud enough last time. But, um, and because there was some discussion about the police staff, that that should be, no police staff should be included, and that because the employees wouldn't like to pay the additional ten percent, perhaps then the department's overall cost for employee wellness could increase by ten percent, and it could be offset by an increase to all department fund balance. I don't know if that's possible, but what I'm trying to do is be fair about the in- about increasing costs for the community center membership because, and later on in here, I'm asking that it not be increased. So, I'm trying to find a balance here because we're asking everyone to pay more ten percent, but yet we aren't asking employees to pay anything. And, you know, ten percent's not a lot. So, I struck a different kind of balance in just having it come from the, um, each department rather than from each individual.
Is that a motion?
So-
I'm explaining it.
Are you saying- are you saying to increase the wellness?
How about if I just remove this idea?
No one's making a motion.
All right. Now, we'll skip over eleven since it's been talked about. And number twelve, and that was a hire twenty-hour week, twenty-hour week administrative assistant for the attorney budget. Affected funds would be the general fund. Hire an administrative assistant for the city and don't hire a public relations information employee for administration. So, Mr. Apicello's obviously not here and can't bring it up, but, um, um, let's talk about that.
I think with- the way we talked about it was the idea, this was the brainstorming idea to get a dedicated half-time person, part-time person, to the city attorney. And we had in finance, um, a half-time person that went unused, so it was kind of transferring that was the idea. To the- to the overall budget, I think it only added nine thousand dollars or something to the overall budget.
I thought it was actually less than that.
Yeah.
It would increase the city attorney budget by nineteen thousand seven hundred and eleven. It would decrease the city administration budget by twelve thousand seven hundred and forty-six, and then you would decrease the unappropriated fund balance by six thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. So, the net effect is just seven thousand.
Yeah. So, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Do we have a discussion? Yes, sir.
Uh, when we had discussed this before, we had talked about a paralegal.
Correct.
I don't see that in- in here. It just says a qualified person, but does- does anybody see paralegal?
No.
No, that's a level of detail that would be not appropriate to do at this level.
It'd be-
We're appropriating money that's up to the city manager and his team to decide how that's used.
Well, I guess my question, the reason I ask, is that if we do hire someone that's like a paralegal that has a lot invested in their education, I mean, that's not- that's someone that's trying to work their way up, maybe wants to be an attorney one day, um, are they gonna- are we gonna be able to get that level of a person on a half-time basis? Are they gonna say, uh, I've invested in this stuff. I need a full-time job?
That discussion still doesn't belong at this level, Mr. Ward? It's not- that's not the budget committee's decision to decide what kind of a- what kind of personnel's gonna be there.
I understand how to-
One second. Yes.
Well, Deanna?
Well, I'm- I'm actually would like to say that it may belong here because what we have originally from, um, from Ron is hire twenty-hour week administrative assistant for the attorney budget. And so, I wrote in, these are my notes. He's looking at my notes here. Anyway, I wrote in qualified. And so, and we did ta- and what we're talking about here is dollars because depending on an assistant or someone with some background knowing a little bit more about what's happening there, you pay a different dollar amount.
I go back to what I said earlier, and the city manager made a proposal of nineteen thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars with an intent in- in that person's gonna meet the needs that he and the, I would assume he and the city attorney have had a discussion about what that role's gonna be. I don't think he probably just made that money up out of the air. So, I assume he's got- looking for the qualifications that he needs. It's- it's the position that he's creating.
That same amount is that the- the amount that is currently being used by that half-time and finance employee who's funded by those two decreases in the thing. It's a decrease in salaries and benefits from administration and a decrease of fund balance. That is the same amount.
I- I beg to differ because if we're decreasing the unappropriated fund balance, then that means that's a new addition. That means it's something that didn't already exist. The only reason we're decreasing the unappropriated fund balance-
Is to match that.
Is to match that.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
So, I- I would agree. The discussion is good discussion, but it's only about the dollar amount. You know, whether, if you don't think nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars is enough money to get what, and I have no idea, uh, for twenty hours a week, that- that would be, um, the change. Make, you know, we kill this motion or withdraw it and put a different amount in.
If we added to that in a few more hours, that person could also work with the recorder, too. No, these are separated, two different things, but that-
Yeah, I'd just assume not get into playing operations. Um, you know, the idea is to get allocated to a budget, to a half-time person, that may, and maybe to answer the- the objective raised by Councilor Ward, maybe somebody does get hired full-time and gets split in two different departments. But our objective here, or at least mine, is to get this cost center budgeted for a direct person.
Yeah, and- but in that case, we would probably want to put more money in the budget for that eventual- for an eventuality. Is that right? No?
I- I would take counsel from Doug, who, you know, it-
Am I making your head pop, Doug?
You know, you know, if this amount isn't enough for, you know, someone who can assist an attorney, you know, it'd be helpful if we, since we have an attorney in the room.
Mr. Chair, may I jump in?
Sure.
I think you're misunderstanding something that's really important, okay? Right now, the administrative assistant's salary is split between the administration and the attorney's budget, okay? The nineteen thousand dollars takes that amount plus nineteen thousand dollars to give to- to meet the salary, okay? It's not- the salary's not nineteen thousand dollars, okay? It's being added to that budget salary amount. This- this does not have anything to do with what that person will be earning. That's based upon our pay scale. But it's the difference, and then the twelve thousand is going to come out of administration. Um, and it's- it's because of how it's allocated. So, you have to kind of separate yourself from what the salary is going to be to just simply how it affects the budget because right now, that administrative assistant is split between two- two budget amounts.
The part-time employee is a zero for the city attorney budget, so that would be what they're giving.
No, no, it- no, it's because it- the salary is in full-time employee. The- the employee right now is a full-time employee. This will move that funds to a part-time employee, and it will- and that whole salary will then end up in the full-time or in the part-time.
So, we're not hiring a twenty-hour week administrative assistance. We're allocating a current employee's full-time position to now be a twenty-hour week for the city attorney.
No, no.
This is- this is the diagram that's confusing.
You have one sta- one full-time employee right now that's paid out of two departments, okay? The way the- and so their salary is allocated in two departments. What will happen is that in the city attorney's budget, in order to get- make the salaries work out for what we're hiring, we need to add nineteen thousand dollars to it. The full salary of that will drop from full-time to part-time on how it's allocated. Does that make any sense?
Nope, not at all. You're saying you have one employee that will be split between two?
We have one employee that's split right now between two departments.
And I understand.
They'd be split between about eight departments.
And I understand that, but in this proposal, you're saying hire a twenty-hour a week. But you're saying we have a full-time employee split between departments. That's two different things.
No, they're not. They're- it's the same thing. You've got one full- you've got one full-time employee. You're now gonna have one and a half employees.
You're not- you didn't say that.
Why not?
Oh, in the budget.
So, in the proposed budget, right, right, right. So, right now, we've got one that's split full-time, and then we've got a part-time public relation. So, we're gonna take the one that's split, put it together, and move the part-time up over here.
And then have to make the difference because the part-time is gonna be paid less than what-
It works. What you'll end up with is a twenty-hour week in the city attorney budget, and you'll have a full-time employee in the admin budget, administration budget that will do both of the city manager assistant and the public relations.
This proposal says do not hire a public relations. It says on there, don't hire-
Right, and that's right because it's in the proposed budget right now, so we would take it out.
So, we're going to be pushing a current employee, two current employees.
We don't have the public relations.
You're only hiring a public relations person, and whoever the person is that's here now will be split between the city attorney and the other one.
Instead of hiring a public relations, you would hire a city attorney?
What we have right now is one employee.
Okay.
And that employee is split between administration and attorney. What I have proposed in the budget is one employee split between the city and the tur- and the attorney and a half-time position in the public relations. What this will do is it'll have one employee in the city administration and a half-time employee in the attorneys, okay? And there will- and the- and the PR duties will fall in under the administration.
The FTE count is the same. There's just a difference in pay rate.
And that's why we need to increase the-
Right.
By nineteen thousand. Yeah, and then the real difference is that you're in- the real difference is seven thousand dollars, okay?
But if I can, getting back to, I think, the question, is the nineteen thousand dollars enough? You- should that allocation be larger in order to satisfy? Because when I look at the city attorney budget currently, there is no split salary in there.
Yes, there is, but it's in the full-time salaries.
I- that- that makes no sense.
Look at the- look at the- look at the personnel scale in the back.
And it's because the person is full-time right now.
Okay, but- but it's split, so you've- in that salary amount, you've got one and a half people in the full-time salary.
So, in the city attorney's budget, there's currently one and a half employees.
Yep.
What page?
Uh, seventeen.
Makes sense. Let me see.
Yep.
Maybe you need-
I- I think I understand what you're saying. I think I understand, if I may, if I may. In this regular full-time salary, hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, that isn't all going to our city attorney. It's going- some of that is going to him, and some of that is going to-
Correct.
-another employee-
Correct.
-who is also paid from another department.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Got you.
Thank you.
Wow.
I think we got it.
Okay.
Thanks.
See where you started, Mr. Ward?
Thank you.
Now, I do have a motion on the table, right?
Yeah.
And a second.
May we have a roll call?
Chair Hoagland, before we have a roll call.
We're gonna have a discussion. One moment, Mr. Chair. Yes, Kevin.
I don't know that, uh, I'm not in favor of this proposal. I don't know that I've seen clear evidence that there's a need for a half-time position to go along with the city attorney, recognizing that, as we discussed in one of the count- in one of our budget meetings, that we are the only city along the coastline here of our size that actually has their own full-time attorney. I'm not sure that that's a good investment of our dollars.
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
I would contend, Kevin, that we're a city of thirty- twenty to thirty thousand, not a city of eight thousand, and that we have to build the infrastructure to handle that number of people, and that we have to have staff in city hall to handle that number of people as well.
And?
Ms. Walke?
And I guess we have- have drawn on, um, on the attorney's experience, but let me tell you, attorneys need assistance. I spent thirty years doing that, and I highly support this motion. I actually was the employee the last time this position was funded.
Wow.
Yeah.
So, you don't, oh, right.
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
I'm inclined to give the city manager the resources that he needs and has asked for.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please? Oh, no?
I- I just wonder if there's any concern for anyone else that they might want to add a little bit to that? Okay.
I just-
I think if that's what the city manager feels, he can get a person for it. I think that's the amount we should fund.
I'm good by that.
So, this, if I can clarify-
This is a tough crowd tonight.
This is only to further fund that department and the public relations to the whoever it is that has nothing to do with this particular thing. That is your call where you're gonna put people.
Yes, sir.
This money has nothing to do- This money has nothing to do, if you want to put PR, I mean, that's, my concern is, I guess, the scope of work, and if it's, you know, that whole thing.
You are correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Steer, may we have a roll call, please?
Casper? Yes. Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Dee Ritchie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yep.
Dick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next one is the eliminate, eliminate the cadet program from the budget. I, along with Ms. Casper, brought that up. For me, felt like, you know, I didn't know the last time you brought up, there's only two cities who pay for a cadet program. I went on it from, you know, it costing money, and, you know, how many eighteen- to twenty-one-year-olds are chomping at the bit, to, you know, so I was going from that point of view. Yes.
I think allocating some funds, because it's a new program, we don't even know how it's going to be received, although it'll become dependent upon it, you know, like maybe five thousand dollars, you know, out of the police fund. But to pace salaries, I think is a little premature at this time till we see how the program goes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
There are two items, number thirteen and fourteen, that deal with the police department. And I believe the, the issue that we all seem to be struggling with is that the police department cannot find enough policemen to fill its slots. And we've got a couple of motions or proposals on the table here to reduce costs, I would not say eliminate, but to reduce the policemen's costs until such time as they've been able to fill their vacant positions. Then they'd be properly staffed to handle both the cadet program as well as the citizen police academy. So I'm not in favor, in items thirteen or fourteen, of eliminating either program. But if, if the resources aren't there to fund them now because they don't have enough policemen, full-time policemen on duty, then I would be in favor of at least postponing not eliminating those lines.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler, could you give us an update on the staffing at the police department?
We have, we have one vacancy position that is, is, that either does not have an offer that's been made, or someone who has been hired, okay? We have, we have some offers that have been made, and they're working through it. So we're really just down, as far as body counts, we're down one employee. We have several that are at various levels of the training, and so they're, they're employees, but they're not yet through all of the training process. But we are down to just one now.
We're just one officer short at this point.
For the record, Chief Killian said we have one that's leaving. Are you on my microphone?
Here, chief.
Either way.
So currently, we have three conditional job offers out. That leaves a vacancy of one on June 2nd. Another officer is leaving for Oregon State Police, so that would create a second vacancy.
Okay. But we're down two rather than down ten?
Five. Five, we're still, right.
Well, so the three that are conditional job offers still are completing their background investigation, then their pre-employment psych and pre-employment medical. So they're not actually hired as yet, but they're in the loop.
Process.
And we really can't overfill that hiring because we've made a conditional job offer to those folks.
Does that mean they've accepted the job pending background checks and so forth?
Exactly.
Okay, and, right. And I'm, and I'm with you, Dee, for that, not eliminating, but postponing. Absolutely. I think getting people involved, it's wonderful having the public know more what police officers do. I mean, it's great, and it's a good city to, to be a part of that way.
Mr. Chair, you're talking about thirteen or fourteen?
Thir, bo, I mean, he was.
Because last night, Mr. Hoagland, we had a wonderful presentation from the police department regarding the relevancy and acceptance of the police academy. And so if we were to get to fourteen, I would encourage retaining that and maybe even adding a little bit to it, because it is a proven program, and it has gone on for a year, and it was going to expand. So I think that thirteen, fourteen are different.
Okay.
I highly encourage you to retain number fourteen and increase it.
Okay. So did we ever get a total overtime cost associated?
Yeah, we had overstated that. The five thousand three hundred sixty-six is the extra cost for this program.
So that's the overtime?
Citizen's Police Academy.
That's the overtime cost?
Essentially.
Okay. So.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask the chief, if I'm here or read somewhere that this, these programs, or at least one of these programs, has put a burden on your staff because of, they have to work all the extra hours to, to run these programs?
So there are extra hours involved, but the officers working those extra hours actually enjoy this type of work?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Sir. Mr. Noikis.
Mr. Chandler, the cadet program, is that a program that already exists?
No.
No.
This would be new. It's based on hiring two twenty-hour cadets, two part-time twenty-hour cadets. And you'd hire them at eighteen with the idea that hopefully they would ultimately become police officers.
And do we anticipate there's going to be people who are interested in this?
I went through college that way, so yes.
Thank you.
So I guess I'm missing a boat. Richie, are you, were you saying that you're, you're not in favor of the cadet program because of the expense? Or, you know, I'm, I'm missing where you really landed after that long sermon.
You know, I haven't heard a motion on the floor yet, so I don't know. I'm sure we're in discussion here. But, you know, I really wanted to hear the discussion on this. I don't know who proposed these two, but I would not be in favor of eliminating these programs, period. But if it's a, if we need some cost reduction until the police department need to ramp up their hiring, then I could be in favor of postponing these programs for a period of time.
Chair Hoagland?
Sir.
And Mr. Chandler, connect, just clarifications. Since these are both thirteen and fourteen, say eliminate, then I'm correct in assuming those are both already in the budget?
Yes, they are.
So that, these are things that the police department has already asked that they could do, they pass that information on to you, and you put those in the budget. So these are programs that our police officers or the police department, or representatives within the police department actually support and would like to be involved in?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we drop thirteen and fourteen entirely off this list. I don't want to say, yeah, I want to drop thirteen and fourteen.
No motion. Okay.
So I make a motion to eliminate the cadet program from the budget at this time, seeing as we're five vacancies short, and it's going to cost an additional fifty-three thousand dollars. No. Okay. And fourteen, I guess it would do the same thing, but we'll just skip right over it. So number fifteen, create a financial placeholder to be used for police equipment upgrade. Mr. Kip, board.
Yeah, can I speak to that for a moment?
I would hope so.
Tough crowd. The police station, the, the, the police are getting a new police station, and it's going to be state-of-the-art, and it's wonderful. We've had a presentation on it, and it is wonderful. And, but one of the things that I've heard, and I don't know if it's true, from actually police officers, is that they feel that there's some, at least this one that I spoke with, felt like there were some upgrades that were, were needed. And, and looking into it, I see that if you just Google "new technologies, police," it comes up with all these really advanced items. And I'll give you an example. In, like in biometrics, it was once an inky, messy job that included fingerprint cards and was acquired at the police station. Now, as technology becomes cheaper, smaller, more portable, and readily available, officers are able to use handheld scanners to instantly identify individuals with criminal paths. So I'm sure it's nice to know that, you know, before you're riding with them or something. Anyway, I would like to see the technologies that the police are using to be up-to-date and cutting-edge, and then, and in line with what, how cool their, their police station is. And as far as retention goes, if, if our police station and technologies that are used there are state-of-the-art, that'll keep somebody there, that'll keep their, I think it'll cut down on their retention problem. Because these young guys, they, they want state-of-the-art, they want cutting-edge, and they want to have good tools. And I'm on the budget committee for the fire department, and have been for the last three years, I think, or four years. And one outstanding difference that I see between them and the police is they have outstanding tools. I mean, everything they have is, is up-to-date and wonderful, and I, I just think that the, the police deserve at least the same. And I'm not here to tell them how to spend their money. They can research it themselves and to see what needs that they could use as far as their new police station goes. But I would really be strongly encourage everyone to give them money to do their job.
Did you?
So I'm, yeah, I make the motion to put a hundred thousand bucks in a placeholder while the, huh? Go ahead.
We could take it out of the million or something else?
General fund, is that okay?
A million, I didn't.
Well, we can take it out of the million, hell, found money. Okay. And so, and I guess my motion would be to provide them with the means to, come on, Doug, help me out, you're an attorney. Okay, I would make a motion to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from the million dollars found to the police fund. The purpose of the transfer is for the police to evaluate. At their discretion, acquire new technology to meet or exceed current policing standards.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, we have discussion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, we have discussion, please?
Just a question. Debbie, is technology, is there a level of where things are capital and not capital? And would, I think, Councilor Ward's, is there a dollar item? I don't think you put computers in capital expense anymore.
Our threshold at the moment is a thousand dollars.
Thousand.
Which is pretty low. I, probably most of the capital they're going to buy.
So the motion would be correct, to get it into capital and then allow?
Plus, the, the police is in the general fund, which means that their budget limit is in total. It's not by category, so even if it ends up in the random category, it doesn't.
Question?
Sir?
Mr. Chandler, as part of the, the new police station project, is new technology for the officers outside of the building structure itself part of that, part of the plan?
New technology outside of the building?
Correct. New technology that might be in their cars, or new technology that might be on their person's.
That would not be part of the, that would not be part of that budget. Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
I'd like the chief or the city manager, if you could tell me what your thinking is along the lines of new technology for the new, the new office or the new building? Are you already making plans for that? Do you need this money?
So the building is in its very beginning process. We're currently negotiating a contract with the architect firm. We're going to be interviewing tomorrow for our owner's representative. And then after that is our construction management firm and stuff, and that's further on down the road. The idea behind the building is to create and build a state-of-the-art police building. We don't know what equipment is going to be included in that. I mean, there's budgeted, I shouldn't say budgeted, there's an allocation within the total price for technology. What that's going to get us, I don't know. But one of the, and, and I appreciate the technology, you know, coming forward and stuff, but one of the things that I have to look for in evaluating what the technology is, is if our current building can support that infrastructure, whatever that may be.
Do you know what the allocation is for the, for the IT that you say that's in your budget of the new building?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time?
No. It's still in the, when we get those three professionals hired, then they're going to get together with city council, community input and stuff to, to figure out the design of the building. And then after the design is figured out, then what goes in it?
Do you need any money for IT, the future IT for the police department in this budget cycle?
For the new building?
For the new building. I'll give you what you want, but I just, is this appropriate time?
And that's not to say that there isn't other technology out there that we can use. I guess I would challenge Councilor Ward on identifying what it is that he's looking for. I mean, I appreciate the thou, or a hundred thousand dollar check, but I want to make sure that what I spend it on fits the needs of the budget committee and the city council.
I, I would be happy I could talk your ear off, because I've been, well.
Yes, you have.
You have no problem in doing that.
My vision is to have the, the, the police as up-to-date as the bill.
Absolutely, sure.
Microphone.
And there's new positions that I.
Microphone.
Oops, I'm sorry. And there's things that other, other police departments that are doing, and that are very interesting, very challenging. And as I say, you can log on new police technology, and it'll, it'll fill the screen.
But please don't misunderstand me, that I can't spend the money. I mean, I very well, I mean, I would have no problem spending it.
Okay, there you go. I rest my case, he's got no problem. You know, one of the things.
I just want to make sure that it fits the expectations of the budget committee and the city council, because I can go out and buy all kinds of stuff. But I want it to be in concert with and productive rather than just stuff.
And, and realizing that, that's why I asked for, to be used basically as a placeholder, because new technology is expensive, and you're probably going, I believe you're going to need more than a hundred thousand dollars. And if we can do a hundred thousand this year and a hundred thousand, you know, possibly next year, by the time your building is completed, you would have a better idea. So if you don't want the money, I'll, I'll take back my, my motion.
Mama didn't raise no fools, so.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
It's an accounting question, then, Debbie. You told me that goes into the general fund. The general fund has a, Mr. Ward's placeholder for two years from now?
Right.
But he, what I think he, he's envisioning is starting a fund for new technology for the police building down the road. Maybe something spent today, but down the road. As he said, technology costs money. He gives the chief time to find it, make sure it works and stuff. So in two thousand twenty, when the police building is done, and perhaps a hundred thousand goes into this account for the next two years. Do you have those sub-accounts? Are you doing that sub-account?
If I can jump into that, because I think I understand what you're asking. In one of the communities that I worked in, we had what they called carryover projects. So that if you had a hundred thousand dollars for this equipment this year, and you didn't spend it, it automatically carried over to the next year. it, it automatically carried over to the next year. We don't, we don't budget that way here. Uh, so whatever money is not spent, just simply goes into the fund balance at the end of the year.
Right.
Now, that is, that is a discussion that Debbie and I have had on whether or not we do want to have carryover projects. And so far, I haven't seen, I haven't seen any big projects that are hanging out there to, to require that.
So I'm, I'm, again, Mr. Chair-
Sir?
Mike, I wanna make sure that we have the ability, you know, as kind as Mr. Ward and Mr. Ritchie is to give the chief a check. Um, but if he's not ready yet to spend it and it rolls over, um, it's just into the general fund, capital, you know, end balance-
It would need to be reallocated next year in order to spend it next year.
Okay?
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Re-budgeted is a better way to say that.
Re-budgeted.
Yeah.
Therefore, Mr. Anderson?
Well, so I, I'm just not sure, then, that Mr. Ward's objective of putting another hundred thousand there next year actually builds that account to two hundred thousand.
As long as the police chief remembers, this conversation is over now, I'm sure it can be rebudgeted.
I mean, that's just a re-budgeting question.
And you, you know, and part of the thing is, you know, binding future budget committees and stuff.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Mr. Chandler, I understand that we're gonna have another million dollar surplus this budget year coming up. Did I read that somewhere?
Not, in addition to the one we already have.
You mean 2019?
Yeah.
You're forecasting extra money coming up?
Depends on a couple of things. Uh, depends first of all, if you eat into it with operational increases, that will affect it. Uh, depends on inflation on whether or not that increases it. But yes, we have projected that over the next four or five years, uh, we'll have that, but on a decreasing basis.
Oh, to, to Dick's point, it's, um, and when I worked at the federal level, Congress would send me money all the time that I never asked for. And I always found a way to spend it. And if we didn't use it within the budgetary life cycle, we lost it. So, I mean, if you, the chief can spend it on something, but he hasn't made a request for anything specific. And the other concern that I have is, as you say, chief, there's already money in the contract or somewhere for equipment in the new building, and we don't know what that amount is either. So I'm not really in favor of creating a pot of money year over year over year for something we haven't even defined yet.
Well, and, and I was trying also, I wanted to disclare the, Mr. Chair, I apologize. But I, I wanted also to move us away from the new building. 'Cause I think there, if I can, to add an analogy, I'm, I handle money for the hospital, and they're also building a new building. But that, and we're pran, planning a hospital of the future with all sorts of technology. But that doesn't preclude us from buying the equipment today that we need to serve the patients today. So I, and I, I love the analogy of the fingerprinting. I see that on CTI or CIS or whatever it is all the time, of the handy-dandy handheld fingerprinting. Now, if that's available and it makes sense and could be used, and the chief, that's a gadget he wants, um, and it would save some time and efficiency and all stuff, I mean, to me, that makes sense. And I, that's what Mr. Ward was, was using as an example of perhaps there is technology that could go into use today that would make their job easier. But I, I'm agreeing with you that it's ironic the chief hasn't asked for it, but he could have been beaten down by Mr. Chandler not to ask for it. I know he wants a new set of golf clubs too, but, you know, I-
That's buried in the budget.
We know.
But, you know, my concern is, is you can't eat an elephant, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? I mean, you might well have to put in a million dollars for new tech, I have no idea. But whatever it is, it might be prohibitive to come before us and say, hey, I, I need this huge pile of money. It might be easier to do it one step at a time. And that was the thought behind this. Again, if you guys don't need it, don't want it.
There is new technology that we can get.
Yeah.
There is new technology.
Yep.
There's, uh, updating the, uh, mobile data computers, all of those kinds.
You need a microphone?
I'm just-
Hold on, sorry.
What?
We could hear you.
You can unmute.
Sir, so there may be technology items that we can use outside of the police building. There's stuff that we might be able to put in the car. I hate to use the word stuff, 'cause I just kinda went around that. But there's different technology items that may be beneficial to the, uh, work and safety of the officers that aren't included in the building. And so when we do build the new building, that's gonna be, you know, within the four walls of the building, not really outside of it.
I mean, there's like Google Glasses, they're, they're coming out, and the Google Glasses, uh, they have facial recognition, uh, technology. And so, uh, you can, you can walk by a crowd and, uh, it'll pick out, using facial recognition technology, it'll pick out who's the criminal if they have a warrant or a warrant against them.
So if there's the infrastructure to support that-
Right, yeah, that's the question.
-there isn't at the moment.
Right.
And all of already-
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair.
Do we, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Can we advance and call for the vote or get along here?
Sure.
Me first.
Do we have-
Excuse me, but I'm-
No, I said, Ms. Hinton, please.
Please. Thank you. Okay, what I wanna say is if we look at, um, number fifteen, which is what we're debating, it says, "Create a financial placeholder to be used for police equipment upgrade." It does not say building specific. That's all I wanna say.
Was there a motion made?
Yes.
He used the word technology. I, I heard technology. So, to correct, Ms. Hinton, not just equipment.
I didn't hear anything about buildings.
Well, no, I know, but I, the motion.
Is there a line item for technology that you currently purchase right now? Is that the eighty-eight thousand?
It would, right now, it would go under other equipment.
Oh, the seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
Which is budgeted for?
Seventy-five thousand dollars is a placeholder for our radio repair system. Get to be determined on how-
On that, on that study.
Tell me, you're the boss?
I don't know.
I think it is.
All right, I'm calling for a vote.
Please.
Could you repeat the motion, Mr. Chair?
Uh, I don't know the motion at the moment. I don't, I don't. I'm sorry. Ms. Dear, can-
I had to transfer a hundred thousand to the police fund to evaluate new technology. And then Mr. Ward has the rest of that. He was reading from something.
Me?
Yeah.
Want me to do it again?
Yes.
I'll, I'll make the, I'll make, I'll, I'll, I'll read it again. And by, by the way, sorry, this is a rough crowd, it is. Um, so, you know, we've been thinking about all these different ways to look at it.
It's a motion.
Let's read it, please.
I'll read the motion, please. I would make the motion to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from the general fund, oh, no, from the million dollar fund to the police, uh, fund. The purpose of the transfer is for the police to evaluate and at their discretion, acquire new technology to meet or exceed current policing standards.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Oh, no, that was, there was a-
There was a second.
It was, yeah.
Riley?
No, that was Doug.
I probably wasn't close enough to my microphone.
I did not second.
I was the second.
It was him.
All right.
Okay, Deanna?
Yes.
Riley?
No.
Kevin?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
No.
D Richie?
No.
Susan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Dick?
No.
Judy?
Yes.
And Amanda?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. The next one is the adding in the police dog, Mr. Kip Ward.
I didn't know I made that motion, but, uh-
Well, you did make a motion, you had suggested it.
I researched it. I didn't know it was even written in there.
That's the top of page six for everybody else.
And, and I did write something on that, though, if, if I might. Um, police dogs are good for public relationships and good for keeping our police safe. No remi, no criminal can outrun a dog, and most criminals won't even try to run when they know that there is a police dog in the equation. Police dogs usually fulfill multiple roles on the job, as one dog can, uh, possibly track, find people, locate drugs or explosives, and protect the handler. One thing about a police dog is that the handler takes the dog home with the him or her, and that officer will never quit if he loses dog. So.
Thanks. So, do you make a motion?
Uh, I don't know if I wanna make a motion, but I'll make it. Uh, I'll make a motion.
Or do we wanna have to ta, talk about it before the motion? Sorry, I don't wanna rush you.
That just came up. I mean, I had looked at, researched police dogs, but I had no intention of bringing it up tonight, but since you brought it up.
I think you did a pretty good job for, you know, planning. Anybody else would like to discuss it?
Probably die a quiet death here.
Was there a second?
Uh, he hasn't even made a-
I have a motion.
It was the motion?
If you want, yeah.
I don't, I don't want, you want, it's not me to make it.
I'll make the motion. I don't even know if they want one.
Well, I-
I, yeah, we'll just remove it.
Okay. Uh, no motion. The next one is number seventeen, "Improve barred road citizen requests affect funds and multiple various funds," um, which we had heard that gentleman speak, I believe, twice now.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, um, before we go to that, did I hear you say that the technology, police technology passed?
Incorrect.
It failed.
It failed, okay, gotcha. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's quite all right. Um, uh, does anyone wanna speak to item seventeen?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir?
Well, this wasn't my idea. Um, this obviously was some citizen testimony we had, and now we have numbers put on it. I guess that I, I'm sympathetic. I run and cycle on that road. It needs help. But, um, I, I'm, uh, my concern is that, uh, that there's kinda be an orderly process, um, for, um, road improvements within the city. And that, yeah, I understand the squeaky wheel, um, issue, but I think, you know, we have, um, something of a master plan. They have a list of, uh, what they wanna do with the money that, that's available for, um, road improvements. And I, I would prefer not to jump into a one-off situation on these as opposed to-
Right. And I was gonna ask, is that, is that road improvement on a list of streets to be improved? Is, it's a collector's street, is that correct? It's a gr, I, I, right, is, is it categorized as a collector's street as well?
Yes.
And I, and, and if so, or in, regardless, is it on a list to be approved? If it is, how far away is it without a boost?
It's, it's not really on a list to be paved. We have five miles of gravel streets. And so, you know, we'd like to bring a program to you probably in the future for paving gravel streets. And it would be, uh, local improvement district, um, to do the sewer improvement and the road improvement.
Okay. Thank you, Lila. All right, so-
Mr. Chair, before we move on, uh, I too hike that road all the time. I'd like to bike it, but I can't. Um, and it's a, it's a mix of, uh, of, of paved, and then when you go through the park area, it's, it's just gravel. But, you know, if you look at a map, that's one of the, one of what, two access points to Olivia Beach.
Well, three, I guess.
Or maybe three.
Yeah.
So, you know, and if something could be done, not six hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth, but something could be done to, to make some improvements to it, not sewers and everything else at this time, but just to upgrade it some, I'd be in favor of that.
I'd be in favor of them filling potholes.
Yeah, I mean, if we, is there a gravel road line item in our public works, like to improve, to, the, the gentleman spoke about every month that gets our every, I don't recall. But is there an amount of money that is for our gravel roads that we use to, to pay for those?
Yes, it's just, uh, our system maintenance line item in streets. And so we grade in gravel, but, um, those roads, the potholes, you know, they need some storm drainage work. Potholes just keep coming back in gravel roads, that's just the nature of them.
Right.
And we did do a major improvement, um, in roads in to all of their gravel streets. So, but it was a, almost like a rebuild. And if you go to that point, you might as well pave it.
Okay. I mean, I don't know. The point of that was to say if we could double the amount of money to, the gravel roads to make sure that it's not, you know, that would even, okay. Thank you, Lila. Okay, uh, we have a motion for seventeen? All right. Uh, eighteen, uh, you had spoke earlier, Deanna, about, um, not increasing the community center rates. And I, I, did Ms. Kimberling say that she was going to be raising the rates?
It is built into the budget.
It is built into the budget. Okay. So, Ms. Hinton, would you like to speak to eighteen?
Um, let's just do it this way. I move to not increase the community center rates.
And where would the-
Funded how?
I'm sorry?
Funds come from, yeah.
Funded how?
The offset come from.
Don't know.
Not an increase in revenue. That would be the, the offset. So by not increasing the rates, the community center's revenue would not be projected to be- Correct. So that money has, that money has to come out of the budget someplace, 'cause right now that money's in the budget.
It's, it's in revenue. So if you cut revenue, there's an offsetting entry. Either you cut expense or you cut the fund balance or you increase revenue somewhere else.
Okay.
Or you decrease the unappropriated fund balance. Which is, I guess, what I would suggest.
Which is that, eight hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, now it's a little less, but. Do we have a second? No second. All right. Number nineteen is add a sign for the community center to the budget affected fund, the general fund. Mr. Door, Mr. Kip Ward?
I would need a sign.
I'll second that motion. All right. So, is there a, can you make an official?
Yeah, I mean, we gotta, yeah, we need a, who would, who would run a business without a sign? I mean, and we're doing that, and then wondering why our revenues aren't correct. Uh, she needs a sign.
Okay. So, the motion is, and then it's coming from where?
A million dollars.
A million dollars, thank you.
I will spend that over and over again.
Yes, the motion is to increase the community, add a sign for the community center paid for by the million dollars, seconded by Mr. Haumbaum?
Haumbaum?
Haumbaum, sorry. And now we have a discussion.
Where would the sign go?
That's my thing, because that's, as I have understood forever, there's no one-on-one access anywhere.
Well, you know, it, it doesn't belong in the top windows with misspelled. I can tell you where it doesn't belong, where it says swim with-
The fancy M.
Yeah. But there are, are places, if we put a moderate sign, that it might be able to generate some traffic. You know, part of the problem of it is as well is a, it's a perception problem because it's- because it says Lincoln City Community Center, and they're, and they don't have enough business. I would suggest, I know, just put it in your mind, is that...
Just bear with me.
Lincoln City Water Park, any, anything would be better than a community, than a community center, because to the tourist driving through, the community center sounds like something private.
Yeah.
And, and it needs to have, the sign needs to have action in it and an action name, so that would, I, I think that would be helpful as well. To build a sign that basically misadvertising what you have to offer as a community center is almost as bad as not having a sign at all. So we need a, we need a sign that's visible, and it, and it, and is attractive to the tourist, that gives the tourists an idea that there's something there for them as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Could we, you know, not get again into the detail, it's lovely, but not necessary? You know, the motion is for $50,000 for a sign, rest assured, like the telephon that got some people in trouble during the election year, you know, me for specifics, it comes back to the city council. So the details can be worked out by staff and brought to the city council.
I agree with that, but I did want you to be aware that it was kind of a two-pronged problem. Number one, visibility, and number two, what they see when they do see it.
Right, and I think, I would hope council would take care of that when they see the proposal.
Yep.
I have one more thought. In one of the proposals is for $150,000 for the new logo and wayfinding. Wondering if part of wayfinding can be finding the way to the community center.
And that's why, and I, part of my, I would love to put VCB in part of that, because it could attract tourists and all that stuff, too. Depending on...
But that's, that's your million dollar, that, the motion said take it out of the million dollars.
Yeah, yeah. And it's been seconded. Right? I second it. Yeah, okay. Okay, any more discussion? All right, may we have a real call, please?
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Maybe.
Can we call our recreation center?
Okay, yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Dee Ritchie?
Yes.
Susan?
Oh, yes.
I know, that's a...
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
And Judy?
Yes.
Woo-hoo!
Motion carries.
Fish on!
Hey, wait, no ego, no ego. No ego, both on the other side and on this side. All right, so the number twenty is increase city contributions to Lincoln County Transit to increase bus service. So I recently went to another meeting for the Lincoln County Transit Advisory Committee, and I brought our concerns about increasing the number of stops and the num, and adding a line and things like that, and they had a, I don't have it with me, but a graph that showed the cost of service per bus. And Costa Valley is expen, is the most expensive at $180,000 per year to have that one service. City, in a city transit, a city loop and a city bus were right around $168,000 per year. So essentially, if we're asking, hey, we would like our services doubled, or an extra stop, or things like that, and there's a lot of, so it's an advisory committee, so it's, everything's, you know, ideas. It's 18,605 is what, what it was, or the, I can't remember the local bus program, I thought it was a little bit more.
Mr. Chair, this was based on the information we received from the county transit service for a limited increase after hours, after its normal hours.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure, so that's, that's good that that came that way, because when I saw that $168,000 and I saw our sixteen, our eighteen, I was like, what is that gonna give us? So, you know, I... Will you put your dog away?
Dee, just when I thought the night didn't get any weirder.
So I would make a motion, and that's, that's it?
That's based on that, what I would really suggest on this one is that if you want to put this in as a placeholder, I'm not, I'm not 100% certain about these numbers.
I would...
I know they came to us from that, but I think there needs to be much more discussion as to what level of service do you actually want.
And, and that's where we're at.
I think there's a big policy decision that's not there. I just took the low number, it could be more, and that low number just came based upon what I heard from you guys and picked up, but there's a big policy question that I think is still out there.
Okay. I would, I would make a motion for a little bit more than that, as just a placeholder for more services. $40,000 from the unappropriated fund balance as a, as a placeholder pending that, which Mr. Chandler can further discover for increased services.
I second it.
Has been a motion and a second, now we have a discussion?
I agree with the earlier comments of studying, because I, there's all different levels and needs. The concern I have, too, is this is an ongoing expense, and, you know, we've had the luxury of a lot of these tonight of being capital or one-time expenses. You know, this, and I get nervous of ongoing expenses, and I really think we should be stepping back and, you know, identifying long-term where this money would come from, and, you know, unappropriated fund balance isn't a long-term.
And it's not, right, I know.
And we know streets isn't funded and things, so I, I guess my question would be, what's your $40,000?
I, I...
Holding, you know, it's...
I don't know, he said he feels that's a little on the low amount, and I, and knowing what I know what it costs to operate a full service per year, you know, it pales in comparison to the costs associated.
I guess, I have no idea of what, how long it would take council, if it's a priority with council, to get the kind of research we need for a policy decision, and then...
In conjunction with Lincoln County Transit's own ability to provide the services necessary that we request.
You need any money in there at all, other than we just maybe move it to a priority?
Well, they asked for it.
Who asked for it?
Lincoln County Transit asked Mr. Chandler for this...
Came from a committee.
Oh, a committee, sorry, sorry.
And this is to study, or this is to buy something?
The discussion was about contributing more to the Lincoln County Transit in order to increase their level of service.
Yes, Mr. Casper.
I was at the Lincoln County Budget Presentation, and asked a question about transportation, and, and what happened is the federal and the state funding have been cut dramatically, so of course, you know, we won't have the services that we want to be provided, so how else can we supplement the services if we don't do it ourselves?
Any other discussion? I mean, I, I would...
Okay. So again, clarification. So what in your vision would this $40,000 go to, per Mr. Casper's information? Are we expecting an invoice from the county in order to keep our services at today's level of, you know, $20,000, just to pick a number, $40,000? So is that what we're, we're anticipating an invoice?
I don't know how, yet, from my meetings, how that would occur, to obtain two more, you know, I don't know. I only know those figures for the full-time one-run. I don't know if we, as a city, are asking for after-hours or more services or those things, what that would cost us that way. I also brought up the point of our tax base versus the other cities in relation to our services, and I have, that has not yet come back, because I want to, you know, if it is based on, you know, part of their, 50% of their funding is based on tax assessment, so is Lincoln City itself being provided for the percentage of what we're paying into?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question. Have, has the Lincoln County Transit, in the meetings that you've been attending, do they bring up comments from riders? I mean, are they getting lots of phone calls saying, how come you cut this route in Lincoln City? I mean, is there some...
So not currently, they, they did one study, one time, in October or November, that every stop for every bus, everyone who rode was given the opportunity to do this survey. So I believe they have 598 out of, on that day of all their total users. So I don't know against how many total riders, I don't know that amount, so I don't know survey sta, you know, survey size to total people, but, but, you know, that was one of the things of more ser, universally, more, more services and more stops. That has been, every city, every outreach program has come back with that more frequently. Yes, sir.
I could support this proposal if it was going to exactly what you're describing right now, going to a survey or in a process, not just a survey, but a complete process to figure out what we want it to look like, what, what the people of Lincoln City want it to look like, and what it will cost, what we'll find out to get there. So it's really funding a exploratory process, because it's not just asking people, certainly that'd be part of it, but then it's figuring out, you're right, everybody wants more stops, okay, what makes the most sense? More stops here, more stops there, what's gonna get the most use? And that piece of the process needs to be, I would think, needs to be done, because then that negotiation needs to happen with the transit to be able to make that, to execute on that plan.
Right.
So I can support this if that's the way that was gonna be going, if we're just saying, we're gonna send $40,000 to the transit and have them increase service, that, that doesn't seem like a good investment.
With a rider, with a rider inputted, you know, not inputted, but the input from riders of where, and, and that's part of the, the, that there are, there was talk of this public-private partnership with the transit, so that's not...
Could I ask Debbie? Debbie, could you help us? If for some reason we got an invoice from transit during the next fiscal year, can we reach into, you know, unallocated or some fund, or to pay for, to keep services at, at current level?
You can't reach into the unappropriated, but currently in the proposed budget is 1.9 million of contingency, and that can be used, yes.
So if we get an unexpected invoice?
Yep.
We, we've got a way to handle it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So then the question really is, we want to put some money aside for a study, but wouldn't that be the transit at our request? And I guess the minute we make the request, they want to see a check, huh?
Right. No? Yes, no? Do you have some, Allison? Have some input?
Sorry, you see me kind of sitting on the...
No, no, please, please join us.
So I spoke with the director, Cinder Bruce, and she assured me that while there is diminished funding, she is not looking to cut any services for Lincoln City, so it didn't sound like we would be receiving an invoice.
Okay.
However, she did respond to several questions based on the budget committee's inquiry, and one of the things that she said is that she believes later evening hours and two city bus loops, two city-loop buses would increase ridership. And so I think, again, this is one of those things that is at council or budget committee, it seems as though you would want to make decisions, or the council would want to make decisions, that would increase ridership, because the ridership is what helps to fund and sustain the loops. So she's saying that she believes if there are two buses rather than one, that it would start at each end of the city to reduce wait time by half for service. And she says, we receive many requests for later hours from residents, many would like to attend Theater West productions and other evening activities, but are prohibited by need for transport. So that was just one thing that she brought up, and I'm sure that there would be others. And we also have a TSP, I haven't looked at it lately, but I think that there are lots of opportunities to find that. Transportation System Plan, thank you.
It's late.
That's right.
Thank you, Allison. Okay. Yes, sir.
I guess I don't see a need for this placeholder necessarily, and I mean, that's what your motion was, was $40,000 from the unappropriated fund balance as a placeholder, sort of undesigned. I guess I'm unclear, I guess I don't see a need for it if we, until there's a plan, and the plan could then be perhaps adopted by the council.
Yeah, and I would question if, if we say, here's $40,000, how fast or what would we get from that, from Lincoln County Transit? I mean, if we're saying, here's the money, where are our services, I don't know that process at all, so... Though I would support it.
And if we have contingency funds that could cover something?
Yeah. Yes.
I was just gonna say that the two things that Allison mentioned, the extra loop trips, as well as the evening things, I mean, that's some real evidence there. I mean, I don't know what we're looking for, do we need, do we know how much that would be? People need to get around, and not everybody drives, and if you live in this town, you can't go to the theater, you can't go to the grocery store unless you have transportation.
And the dial-a-ride service, I think, even stops at 3:30, so even that, you know, that's not gonna help you.
Yeah, that's just not acceptable.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of expanding the service, I was when this first was happening in the city many years ago. I've just, I, I don't know what this particular proposal, and we don't know what it would cost, we don't know anything, what we are doing.
We're playing outside of our venue again. I think it, I would have rather have said increase bus service and not as a placeholder, I think was more in line with what I'm trying to say, or to do, not as a placeholder for whatever I said earlier.
Are you amending your motion?
Yeah, I would like to amend my, well, I don't know even who seconded it. Yeah, I would like to amend it to not be a placeholder, but to increase bus service. Okay, so, so now it's to increase bus service.
So now I'll weigh back in and say, now you are talking about ongoing expenses year after year, because there's no sense doing it once, and with that, I want more than tonight, you know, the study and, you know, you know, I just think you make it a priority of council, you do your work, and you come back to the budget committee.
Great.
Great.
Councilor Anderson speaks my mind.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, may we have a real call, please?
Deanna?
Oh dang it. Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
Doug?
No.
Chester?
No.
Dee Ritchie?
No.
Susan?
No.
Kip?
No.
Dick?
No.
Judy?
No.
Amanda?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Number twenty-one is a reduce, oh, we talked about that one. Number twenty-two, reduce the TRT audit to $5,000, and that would be for that $40,000 compliance review section. Mr. Kip Ward?
I'm not gonna run that up the flagpole much.
Okay, so that's a no motion. So now, we have...
But I, sorry, may I?
Mr. Chair?
But I would, I would like to get together with you sometime, Deanna.
Sure, of course.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Chandler.
There were four other items that I went back and I got an email and some others that didn't make it onto this report that I did need to bring up tonight.
I wrote them down, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the first one was on connectors for sidewalks. Unfortunately, I wasn't, I could not find in my notes what the amount that that was.
I, I don't know the amount because I'm not a sidewalk person. There's two places along 101 on the south end of town where the sidewalks end and don't start again. One is from the movie theater to just past Theater West. I don't know the, there's no sidewalk. There's sidewalk all the way up there, there's no sidewalk there. Another is coming over the, coming over the hill. Yeah, you can't walk from one end of the town to the other on Highway 101. You cannot. So that's one. May, can you re-list your, the other three, please?
Yeah, the, the next one was from Mr. Anderson on adding funds to the unbonded assessment fund. There was not an amount that was given to that. The next one after that was from Chairman Hoagland on adding to the outside agency. The budget currently has one hundred thousand dollars in it. Fifty thousand is for the traditional amount that we've had. We added another fifty thousand in that specifically to be used for homelessness. The total requests were one hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
Except one of the requests did not have a dollar amount.
Okay.
So it's, it's actually something more than.
It's two hundred and thirty-one. If we're, if we're talking about Shiloh's Place, they wanted a hundred thousand dollars, so.
Oh, well, they didn't write that.
But that's what she, that's what she said when she gave her presentation.
She wanted a hundred, then that would be two hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
And then the last one?
And then the final one is that we have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for the repair of the Taft Dock. Since we put this budget together, we have learned that it will be, that it will need double that amount, so an additional hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and also we have not talked about the hundred and fifty dollar transfer from the million dollars to the Economic Development Toolbox, the logo and wayfinding.
Yes, we have all of those, yes.
Also.
We haven't signed, we haven't, I'm saying we haven't talked about it.
Also on Deanna's memo, there's three new items.
Right. Okay, so.
Back to the outside agency question, the, is the warming center, the fifty thousand asked by the warming center in that?
It is asked by the Lincoln City Warm Center, not by the Homeless Solutions.
So the, the figure you just said was two hundred and three thousand or whatever. Is, is the fifty thousand part of that?
The fifty thousand dollars is part of the one thirty-one, five eighty. The, the, the question mark, it was a hundred thousand dollars. She gave a presentation to council. It is not part of the budget. It's not part of, it's not on, it's not written down. But, okay. So.
The page, I'm sorry, page thirty-one of the budget has a list of the requests.
So I would like to start with the, the remaining ones from Mr. Chandler, the Economic Development Toolbox. Let's just start with that.
I would move that we approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Economic Toolbox from the one million dollar.
Second.
So what you're really saying is to keep that in the budget.
To keep it in, correct, correct. To keep it in.
Oh, what was?
We don't really have to make a motion, so.
So.
It's in the budget now.
Correct.
And no motion has been made, so you're not making a motion.
Well, I was making a motion to keep it in. That's ridiculous.
Okay.
I'm admitting that.
Got a little ahead of ourselves.
I like you, Counselor.
All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. You know, all the other, I, I mean, we have this, and we also have all the list of the other ideas to come out of the million dollar fund. Do we know a total for that? Because that might be helpful in answering the, you know, going through this list.
I have a list of a million dollars.
Which, and it's on the board as well, right? Updated to what we've approved or not approved?
Yeah, the propose, call it, the proposed column is what's in the budget and the approved is what you voted on so far.
So.
So you've got two hundred thousand in there so far. Hundred and fifty of that is not in the proposed budget.
Can you tell me again where the Economic Development Toolbox goes?
It's in the Economic Development Department, Department in the General Fund, which is page twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
It's line item six-two-seven, zero-one-five-zero. Six-two-seven? What page are you on?
Uh, twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
Well, Debbie, can you move the hundred and fifty over? We just talked about that. And we haven't talked about the next two. And we haven't talked about the street overlay.
I guess I can move them all over.
Okay, then we could have a good total.
In which case, there's fifty thousand dollars left.
It becomes a matter if you want to eliminate.
Okay.
One that's in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, so as a consensus, we'll just go through of these remaining ones. Not, not making motions or anything like that. Econom- Economic Development Toolbox, does everyone have a consensus that that, yes, that's a good amount?
Yes.
I mean.
Yes.
I mean, because there's other things that we're also trying to propose.
That's, that wasn't in the million dollars.
It's in the proposed budget, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm, why, why are we talking about that? I'm confused.
As a way because there are other things to be spent that are proposed to being spent from the million dollars.
Right.
So.
But since this isn't a part of the allocation of the million dollars.
It is, well, it is. He's proposing to fund this, this, this department by this transfer.
We don't have two million.
So I, I question.
Got you.
I question it being funded by one-time, if it is a one-time purchase, this is not a one-time purchase. This is.
What's not? What's this here?
What's the, this is what you're saying? The Economic Development is being put in to that department and it funds, that funds it. I mean, it's not a, it's not a one-time purchase.
It funds the economic development programs, which can be a one-time event, or if you wanted to do it again next year, it could be next year. But it works as both their grant and their loan programs. And what this does is that right now that Economic Development Toolbox is limited to the Urban Renewal District. These funds would be available anywhere throughout the city.
And, yeah, and I, I guess now it's making sense of why we. That's what kind of bothers me, only a hundred and fifty thousand economic development opportunities for the entire city. Now, coupled with urban renewal, and I guess one would rationalize that the Urban Renewal District is where all the commercial retail is, so that should get the bulk of, and we just funded that.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I wasn't here, but I know.
We've just stayed here.
So.
So I'm, I'm.
What other, what other businesses could apply for this? This is just for businesses?
It would be for something that is associated with economic development.
So I have a, I don't know. It's a business. I mean, I mean, I don't know how that.
I guess you have to be defined on.
Hi. So right now, Urban Renewal has a few loan and grant programs. We've had our facade improvement loan program for a long time. We also have a business expansion loan program and a, an energy efficiency loan program. We also have two grant programs, one of which is the Downtown Manager, which is a two-year pilot project. And then we also have something called Local Program Support Grant, which is for our economic development partners to apply for grant funding. And right now, the, the folks that we partner with on that is the Small Business Development Center. And they offer scholarship classes for business development to businesses located in the Urban Renewal District. So it could be business owners or employees of businesses.
So we really envision this as something that will be business creation, a business expansion, or business location.
Could this be VRDs applying for it?
Under the current program, no, I don't.
Under this Economic Development Program.
It would be operating under the current program, and no, I do not believe that VRDs qualify.
So, if I may? So could, so could Ms. Casper's high-speed internet fit underneath this to bring, to bring business? I want to know.
Well, this basically would fund economic development loans and grants. And we don't know what those programs are because this is a new venture. So in terms of policy decision-making and what programs would be offered, that would be yet down the road.
We really anticipate this, so the answer to your question is perhaps, okay? We really anticipate this in helping businesses in either creation, expansion, or location. So if there is a business that would need an extension of, of some sort of infrastructure, then yes. I think that would very definitely qualify. If it means to, the, the city just simply wants to extend a service, but there's no business tied to it, no, I don't think that would, would necessarily tie to it.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison. Okay, so leave that one out, says. The hundred and fifty thousand dollar new logo on wayfinding signs, which you had said fifteen thousand is for the logo?
Yes.
I would make a motion to remove the fifteen thousand dollars for the new logo. Fifteen thousand of that is what he said would be for the, a new logo. All right.
Oh, wait a minute.
Actually, I would make a motion on that, if that's okay. See if I can get a second on this. I would, I would like to, to take away the wayfinding signs and leave the logo for fifteen thousand and remove the wayfinding signs for a hundred and thirty-five thousand because I think we've got enough, we have a lot of signs in town. See if I'll get a second.
I'll second it. Do we have a motion and a second?
Discussion.
Discuss.
Who seconded that? Have you read the book, Brooks' report?
Maybe ten times. But, you know, he, he says a lot of things in there, and most of them are good, but not all of them are, are, have panned out for this city. We've always had a sign problem. Take it, well, never mind.
Well, I think we need consistent signage.
That's right. If we've always had a sign problem, then we should address it. And wayfinding signs would help.
Right, right.
I disagree with you, but that's okay. It's not mine.
Okay. The motion again was just to keep fifteen thou-, put fifteen thousand in for new logo?
Yes.
And remove a hundred and thirty-five?
Correct.
Into a pot.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May we have a roll call, please?
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
Doug?
No.
Chester?
No.
Dee Ritchie?
No.
Susan?
No.
Kip?
No, 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 no. Honored me, yes. Yes.
Everybody else said no.
Just trying to get along.
Sorry.
Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
What was it again?
It is to remove a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from this particular transfer.
Logo and wayfinding, so basically logo, take away the wayfinding sign.
No. Motion fails.
All right, very good. Next one is the hundred thousand dollars for the sign and improvements, which, we don't have a north sign, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's what this would be?
Uh, more north, and if, if you change the logo, the look on it would replace the south as well.
Okay. Any discussion? Everybody okay?
Is there any part of this that could be paid for by VCB funds?
The entrance signs specifically.
Transit rip taxes need to be spent on tourist attraction, or marketing and, and increasing your tourism. I don't.
I love Newport signs.
So it depends on what you make a sign will bring more tourists, I guess.
Yeah, if, if it's welcome to tourists, maybe they'll stop and.
Lincoln City, home of the water park.
Yeah, it's the ocean.
Ultimately, it's how you interpret it, but I think that may be a bit of a stretch.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there a second on that?
There's no motion. There's no motion. We're just discussing.
Okay.
Is that a comfortable amount? Do we have a split between the sign and entrance improvements? I mean, is there, is there a reason why it's two different things?
It's the same thing. It's the two entrances.
The two entrances.
I'd make a motion to remove the entire hundred thousand away from sign and entrance improvements, not to spend it on sign and entrance improvements.
Say that one more time, please.
Not spend a hundred thousand on entrance and sign improvements.
I'll second.
My rationale is simply already asked. If, if TRT, Transit Room, doesn't pay for it, and that targets tourists, as Debbie has just said, the entrance sign, why are they there? You know, if you're not dressing it up and calling out who you are to your tourists, you know, your business, why have it?
Signs are not for the residents, the entrance signs.
Bingo.
They're for visitors.
And if they were and effective, then TRT would pay for it. So I question why we're spending that kind of money and leasing land and then throwing park time, cutting grass on one and a half signs exist currently. And I sure don't want to spend another hundred thousand.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
When I enter a sign, enter a city that has a welcome sign, I feel welcomed. And I feel a lot better about staying there and spending money there. There's a lot of cities along the coast that have very welcome, mean entrances, and ours is not at this point.
I don't think he was saying that, that, I'm sorry.
No, those are the cities you drive right through, I think, you know.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to say, I think the discussion here is between who pays for them. If, if, you know, VCB pays for them, then that's perfect and excellent and does do the welcoming to the tourists. And if the city pay, should pay for it or not. And I think the motion on the table is that the city budget does not pay for it. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So I would vote yes, is that right, if I agreed with that? I was trying to figure out how to vote.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
I, I guess I need a little clarification.
Yeah.
So is the motion that it's just not done, or is the motion that the VCB is paying for it?
I didn't mention a thing about VCB.
Removing it from, removing it from the one million dollar pay-for-it fund.
That's what I thought.
Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Chair? I'm trying to think, and I may ask Mr. Chandler this. In our, in the, the VCB section of, wherever it is that we dig that information out of, I believe specifically it reads it's not for signs, but I, I didn't anticipate it, so I haven't looked it up. But I, I, I thought it specifically addressed signs, that VCB money is not to be used for signs. But it could just be a false memory, I don't know. Does anybody know?
Let me read you a couple of things that might give you the idea of, no, you can't, and might give you the idea of, yes, you can. So like I said, it really comes back down to the city council's interpretation of it. This is on page three of the budget message. And I'm going to begin with item B, okay? This is on page three of the budget message, and I'm going to begin with item B, okay? Two-eighths of the revenue from the 8% tax shall be deposited in the city's Visitors and Convention Bureau, shall be restricted to marketing Lincoln City as a tourist destination, and shall be expended solely and directly by the Visitors and Convention Bureau. Marketing means those activities that will increase Lincoln City's share of leisure, motor, coach, and conference business through advertising, public relations, collateral materials, tourism research, and operation of a visiting, a visitor information center. I don't believe it fits there.
Public relations.
And that is where the, and that's where the Visitors and Convention Bureau fund comes out of. Now, if you look at number A, it says one-eighth of the revenue from the 8% shall be irrevocably pledged and utilized while bonds are outstanding for the repayment of the general obligation bond issued for the purpose of the acquisition. I'm going to jump clear down to the bottom. After it's paid, it states thereafter, this portion of the transient room tax will be allocated to other capital construction needs of the city. That's located in the facilities capital fund. So if the idea is to say VCB should pay for it, I don't think they can. But if the idea is to say transient room tax should pay for it, it would be paid out of the facilities capital fund.
That's interesting. Mr. Chandler, as you read that, and you were reading that first, that part B, that first thing, I thought, well, that's exactly who should be paying for it, it is marketing. It's entirely marketing. That's what a sign in front of the city is, it's marketing, and that clearly says it's the VCB is to pay for marketing.
Advertising.
Yeah, that's exactly what a sign is, advertising and marketing. That's what I'd say. So anyway, that's not what's on the table. The table is to remove the $100,000 from the million-dollar purchase amount. We have had discussion. May we have a roll call, please?
Kevin?
No.
Doug?
No.
Chester?
Yes.
D Ritchie?
No.
Susan?
No.
Kip?
No.
Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Six, five, motion fails.
Okay, yeah, all right. So we've reduced the public art to 50,000, and now we're at street improvement for 350,000 in addition to what is currently being put out for street improvement. Can you give us a total amount for that?
Yeah, so in the, it's in the street capital fund.
Appendix what?
Let's find it here. Ah, just found it.
Street operations, you said?
No, street capital.
So that's page nine of the appendix?
Yeah, but the budget itself is page 51. You can see in the detail line, there's 1.484 million in street overlays. That does include this 350,000. So if you reduce it, it will reduce this amount.
And while we're on this, when Mr. Narakis brought up that, that we kept, we were reducing this, was it this one or the sewer that we were reducing and then? Was it sewer that you brought up? That was, that...
I recall that.
Okay, never mind. It was more operations, anyway. Yes. Mr. Chandler, where in the budget would the project of connecting sidewalks fall?
Probably on this, oh, I'm sorry. On the same page, under sidewalk construction.
And then there's another one, $100,000 for sidewalk improvement, but not in this fund.
Yeah, sidewalk improvement would be more of a repair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know how much it costs to put in a sidewalk?
To construct per, per thousand feet?
Per block.
For each, or something.
Either 200.
It varies, but I can give you a good example, because some of them need storms, some need, you know, other, other things. So if you go from southeast 19th Street to 23rd Street, that section, because it has a lot of storm work, that's approximately $400,000 to do that section on Highway 101.
Southeast 19th to 23rd.
That's southeast 19th in front of Hilltop.
On the east-hand side?
Yes, on the east side.
So that's about $100,000 a block, and that...
It is. The other project that went from 19th to front of Oarsborne with the bus shelter was about 150,000, and that was because it didn't have as much storm drainage work. So, so it varies, they vary.
So if I could finish, so the, on page 51, the sidewalk construction, the $250,000 that's in there will get us two and a half blocks approximately?
That is per project, so let me look at the... The 100,000 was for some storm drainage projects that we have.
The $100,000 sidewalk improvement, you're saying?
Yes, because that's, that's storm and sidewalk, and so we had some storm projects listed there.
And then the $250,000 sidewalk construction?
Six, three, four, zero, two, zero, eight.
Okay, so I had, we had improvements on Northwest 21st Street. That was part of that sidewalk improvement and parking improvement. So I had that split up between overlay and this line item.
So what I'm trying to get to is what already is in the budget, and about how many blocks of sidewalk we can expect for that, and do we need to put more money in there?
Can you do more sidewalks than what's been budgeted?
Yes, yes, we have, we have sidewalks already designed. We have that one from, if, if you're wanting to do the gaps on, on 101, you know, there's probably from one end of town to the other, to the other, there's probably about 4 million to 5 million in sidewalk gap projects. We have already, you know, completed reports on that and tried to get grant money from ODOT for those in, in some of the larger projects, or they come up with these unfunded project amounts, and so we've turned in all of those. But, but usually, like the Oarsborne, southeast 19th to Oarsborne, that project was funded by Urban Renewal, and Urban Renewal used to budget and, and for public works about $100,000, $150,000 a year, and so we, those are the types of projects we would do with that money.
I have one more question, which is, in some of the areas where it seems appropriate, could we do paths instead of, instead of the full sidewalk?
Yes.
For a reduced amount? I just see so many people walking on the highway, especially in La Coma, on, you know, there's some sidewalk on the west side but not the east side, and...
And that depends, you know, we're doing that on some of our side streets, like we just did on Northwest 50th Street.
That's right.
However, you know, we're under ODOT's ruling on the highway projects, and so we'd have to get that through them, and, you know, with, with the ADA and the different things that they're looking at right now, I have a feeling that they have to be sidewalks on the highway.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
While we're on that, sidewalks, Lila, there's a project scheduled sometime in the near future from Niotsu to West Devils Lake, a walkway. ODOT and Slets.
Yes, the Slets tribe.
Right.
It's, it's under the city. We, we put that project forward, and it's 3 and 1/2 million dollars, and so we're trying to, I was going to bring it back to council, to look at that contract, and so we're, we have, we're setting up a meeting with the tribe right now, just trying to negotiate through that, their contract language.
Where I'm going is, you know, it's a nice new addition, 101, and it gets people down from the post office down to West Devils Lake, but we still have a gap then from West Devils Lake to Logan Road.
Correct, on both sides of the highway.
Yeah, but even to Councilor Hinton's point, you know, pick one side, at least there's a sidewalk, and that's a heavily trafficked area, both cars and pedestrians just trying to get to Safeway and stuff. So I guess the question, I'm, I'm wondering on a ballpark figure, is, does 400,000 do that, you know, take us to Logan Road from West Devils Lake, or some kind of ballpark amount that if we threw there?
If it was, if it was a pathway, and so what we actually are designing from West Devils Lake Road to Niotsu is a path, and part of it has to be a boardwalk because of the wetland, and so we are, we are going to come forward with the path, we did talk to them about that, but I'm talking about, you know, in Lincoln City proper, you know, whether we could do the path, but about pot, that would be a possibility from West Devils Lake Road to Logan, in that it's a little bit more rural section. So we can certainly ask that, because they were, they seemed agreeable with that section.
Oh, oh, for our design, but I, I guess I'm wondering with the, if we're looking for money, if there's money left over, would that be an ideal spot in trying to fill gaps along 101, you know?
It is, it is, you know, a little bit on the outside of town, but it really does get that workforce, you know, a pathway for the workforce.
What, West Devils Lake to Logan Road is outside of town?
No, it's not, it's, it's just, you know, it's not inside the city where you have probably more walking, but, so we could, we could certainly, we can certainly look at that. I don't think 400's going to be quite enough.
I'm, I'm looking for high-traffic areas, you know, I think of Homer, Homer.
Holmes Road.
Holmes, folks' road, where I always see people walking from apartments, but getting to Safeway, so I'm always thinking around where people are walking to.
I think that, that's the higher traffic, and that would probably need, need to be an actual sidewalk.
Okay, so back to the $350,000 for the street improvements, if we say that's yes, we're left with $50,000, is that's correct? Of the million, and then we still have $798,000 of the unappropriate fund, and if needed, the 1.9 contingency.
Did this go to, on the budget, is this where we saw the overlay? So it went into the overlay line item? Because as I remember, the overlay li, line item?
1.4. Or 8 million, yeah.
And when we did the forecast, five-year plan, it, it went 600, 700, I think this is the year, 700,000 or something, and then drops back down.
750,000, that goes to 400, 412, 424, 437.
That's where I came up with my 300, and so I'm thinking 400, you could drop off, drop off, move it to sidewalks, and...
Yeah, I mean, they went 38,000, 38,098, 212, 483, so it went...
Down, down.
So, I mean, I, sure?
His mouth is still open.
I would also make a motion.
You know, I, I would make the motion to reallocate this 350,000 to a sidewalk line item.
Construction?
New construction, yeah, new, new construction of sidewalks, whatever it's called.
Is that a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to reallocate the $350,000 for street improvement to new construction of sidewalks. May we have discussion, please? Lila, something to say?
That, that will take the money out of the overlay, the 1 million, okay.
It'll be, it'll be...
So the streets, the streets we have designated, that 350 is part of that 1, 1,484 dollars, just so you know.
You'll do 1.30, 1.34.
A little bit more of sidewalk.
Right.
This year sidewalks, next year streets. Do we still have a balance of what for street overlays?
1.3, 1.13, 4.
So that, that'll take some other ones off the list that you see in the budget message.
Okay, any more discussion? May we have a roll call? I'm sorry, D what? No? Oh. That's all right. May I have a roll call, please?
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
No.
Chester? D Ritchie?
No.
Susan?
Um, yes.
Kip?
No.
Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Indiana?
Yes.
Eight, three passed.
Okay, so of the million dollars, we have $50,000 left.
$2,000?
Fifty, I think you said $2,000, $50,000, sorry. $50,000 of that, I mean, what, now, now we have the, the few things left from the, we have the unbond assessment, the outside agency, and the tap dock repair. And workforce housing, sidewalks, which is tied in, and playground equipment as well.
I, yeah, I'd also like to throw some more money into the nonprofit grants.
Okay. Is that the outside agency, or is that something? Correct. I, I brought it up, but I mean, I'm... Going to that? No, no, I, no. So essentially, we have 700, 850,000 minus $2,000 to do things with, correct, Mr. Chandler?
Where are you getting 700?
Because of that 6.800, 6.8000 of the unbond, unappropriated fund balance, that's 800,000.
You're wanting to drop it down to 6 million?
No, 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 I don't want to go to 6, what?
So the amount that you have currently, based on this 96,000, 354,000?
Microphone, Mr. Chandler.
It was, as I, as I understood it, there was that amount, the total balance, minus 1.9 million as a contingency. After subtracting the 1.9 million for contingency rainy day fund, what we were left was an unappropriated amount of 6.8 million, where you wanted to keep it at 6 million, having something to do with 800,000.
Right, and since, and tonight you added to that because you cut back on the 200,000.
So it's more than 6.8 now, 6.996.
Let's let Debbie update it.
I got two lines here, sorry.
No, we don't have to spend it all.
No, I... I love it, I love it.
It's not Christmas.
I love it, Dick. It's great.
Okay, so the million is currently at 950,000, and then we've had the 2,000 and the close to 7,000 here, so our unappropriated is at, it's still about 6.8 million.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I, would it be, are we going to consider the tap dock repair issue, because it was like, that would, if you want to...
The whole point of that was to say that we still have some money to be able to spend on something, so that's why I wanted to make clear that in my mind, there was still some money that we could put on things. So $50,000 of the million dollars, I would like to get that done, do something with.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I'm moving the $50,000 into the outside agencies.
I second it.
$50,000 of the million dollars to outside agencies.
I second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to the outside agency to increase to 150,000, which will then be voted upon by council, is that correct?
Distribute.
Distributed, thank you.
Distribution.
So this is just the funds to be able to do that. So this is just the funds to be able to do that.
So, what would the motion, we, originally, it was 100,000 in outside, so this is a new 50,000?
Correct.
So 150, additional?
Of a, of.
So make it up to 150.
One time, that's not, next year it wouldn't be.
Just one time.
And prior to this year, it was 50,000, so essentially, this year, we've increased it 100,000 dollars.
That would be correct.
Just to be clear.
And I guess, not wanting to get into distribution.
No, no, please let.
But, is this the way you're thinking of taking care of homeless from, from this fund? Or are we gonna be touching the homeless topic?
I was not going to suggest anymore. It had been suggested by Kevin and seconded by Susan. I brought it up earlier as a way to ensure that those things could be funded. They had been increased to 100,000 dollars, so that was already there, I mean, that, my idea was there.
But, our request total.
1.30.
More, more than even the 150,000.
Uh, not officially. She didn't get that in in time.
Right. I'm, and I, you know, I don't.
She actually had a request, I'm sorry.
It was not.
Oh, yeah, it came in, you know, there is a request there, but, you know, now, whether it was on time.
I know we don't always fund all the requests.
Correct.
Right.
I understand that, but, but even the 150 does not fund all the requests.
Which is very normal, I mean, yeah. So, but my question still stands, is there an expectation from the Budget Committee that there's still an item to deal with, with homelessness? Or, or is this the area where you're thinking, or leaving it up to council to help take care of that question of homelessness?
When I made the motion, the thought was leave it up to council to help take care of the homelessness.
And use this avenue, okay.
Any more discussion? Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
D. Ritchie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yep.
Dick?
No.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
And Riley?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, so now, we have the connector streets, Kevin. How do you feel about talking about that right now?
The connector sidewalks, I'm good, we added some money to sidewalk.
All right, unbonded assessment, Dick, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, and this was, this is a, a fund that we dip into, to assist in the LIDs for both street and sewer, when neighborhoods, you don't want to tack all streets or sewers. And, on the table right now, the council is dealing with one would, would pretty much take care of, you know, use most of the funds. And so I was hoping to put some in there for the coming fiscal year, since we continue to encourage the LID in streets and convert septics to sewers. I don't have an idea of money, I was looking at 100, 150,000 and trying to take it from areas you've already used up.
So, I mean, right, we, there's still, I know it's not Christmas, but there's still.
My sign, you know, I thought the signs would be good.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I just don't know where to take it from.
Could, it, it could be that unappropriated.
I'd, I'd move, move, motion that we allocate 150,000 of unallocated funds to the unbonded assessment fund?
Second.
So a motion and a second, we have discussion, please? Dick, can you give me an idea, I'm not really familiar with this fund, how this works? What that, what that actually funds, how long that would last, how, how much is that used in a year? What, what are we getting for that?
Yeah, what, we end up being the bank for an L, uh, LID. And so they typically on the sewer, they have 20 years to pay us back, so you kind of need it, you know, in play for a long time. So the, the payback's real slow.
Page 79.
There is payback, but it's slow.
It's slow.
Right, we're currently getting receipts from one of the LIDs.
Anybody second that?
I did.
I was, I am, we are in discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Chandler, is that? I mean, that's.
You're in discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just writing my notes.
Unappropriated to the unbonded?
Yes, sir.
That's.
That's right.
That's legit, as they say?
It is.
All right, may I have a, a roll call, please, with Susan being last, please?
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
D. Ritchie?
Yes.
Kip?
Yep.
And, Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
And Susan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and now, we've talked about the outside agency, everyone feel that that 150,000 is sufficient?
That's, we just, we just added 50 to that.
Yes, I know. I asked, do we feel that the 150 is sufficient? I just wanna, since it's there, like everything else. All right, Taft Dock has been proposed as needing 200,000 dollars to improve.
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Sure.
If you're so inclined, and I hope you are inclined to do this, because this is really a jewel for the community, we would recommend that you take the 100,000, extra 100,000 dollars from the facilities capital fund, unappropriated balance.
It's contingency.
Sorry, contingency.
Facilities contingency.
And, and not from the general fund.
And not from the unappropriated?
Exactly.
Is the first 100,000 coming from the facilities contingency?
It's coming from the parks capital fund.
I would make a motion that we should transfer about 100,000 dollars from the facilities capital contingency.
Contingency.
For the tap dock repair?
For the tap dock repair, thanks.
I'd second that.
Anybody fighting for it, huh? All right, may we, uh, may we have discussion, please? Hearing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Deanna?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
D. Ritchie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yep.
Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Amanda?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, got two out of 60.
Three, I think we got three.
You guys are getting friendly, I'm gonna run one of my old ones back.
No. You do not, you don't have the floor, no. Is that gonna be up and current, and it'll look nice and all that stuff, I mean, now that, I mean, is there, is there a plan for it, and it's, I mean, it's not, I mean, I don't really.
She's, she's gonna brag.
All right, let her, let her, let her brag. Come on, girl.
I don't know if I can brag yet, we have an engineer that's coming on the 30th to take a look at, at it and give us a new scope. And so we'd have to be replacing the deck, and that's part of the increase. So I don't have an official engineer's estimate, but I added 100,000 because I think that'll, it, it should cover it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask you a question? Will this be ready and usable by July 4th?
No.
August 21st?
Yes.
Yeah!
August 12th?
All right, so we have, so.
I had one little one, it was minor, just as a, this was that 5,000 dollars that we talked about was lacking in the Economic Development Department for Marketing effort. So travel, conference, marketing, there's no.
Did you say 5,000?
Yeah, I mean, that was the suggestion, so, I don't know if we need a special.
What's, if it's, yeah, if it's not in there now, we need to add it, and take it from somewhere.
From the unallocated again, or just?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, so the motion is to take from the unappropriated fund 5,000 dollars to put into.
Economic Development Department in the city.
The line item specifically?
It was travel, conference, marketing.
I would second that. Discussion? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
D. Ritchie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yep.
Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
And Riley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so now we have two more things to do, that's correct? The tax rate and the sewer bond levy.
Mr. Chair?
Chair?
Are we leaving the last three, we, we just eliminating?
I'm sorry.
Back to the Diana sheet.
Oh, oh, yeah, thanks, I forgot. So workforce housing. Was an, was to put 300,000 into that. The workforce housing, is it a zero at the end? So I was wondering about that, how it's the ending fund balance at a zero, so I was concerned with that.
A lot, a lot of our, a lot of our funds, we budge at all remaining funds in a contingency. In our capital funds, it just goes right into the capital as a contingency. Um, where is 631?
68.
Do you know what page that's on?
68. So I was just afraid that that would leave us with nothing to do next year.
So in the past, we've put contingency basically in the capital line item called workforce housing. It's an unspecified.
So that would be next year's beginning balance?
Um, so that 124,000 is available in this year's budget, but it is not, um, it's not tied to a specific project, so unless that changed, that would be available next year.
And that's a council decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
So how much, if I may? Do we have any funds to draw from anywhere to add to that? I guess that would be my question. That just doesn't seem adequate to me, when workforce housing is such a key issue.
I think rather than asking, do we have funds, I think we need to ask, what's the, what's the use? What, how's that money gonna be used? If there's no purpose for that money besides putting in something called workforce housing, then there's no reason to move money in it. If there's a project or something we're gonna use, then what's that gonna take? That, I think saying, do we have money to move in, is putting the cart before the horse.
Sure, I understand that. And I think that's probably a council decision to spend the workforce housing money, I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I went into it thinking it's gonna be zero. You know? So. No, all right, all right. I mean, would that be for purchasing things or land trust, I mean, I just don't know, have any clue.
So I can tell you in the past what it's been used for, and that is for revolving loan program, for the land trust. And it's been used twice over to create the two homes that are in Lincoln City. So, as part of continuing partnerships that the city has with, let's say Habitat for Humanity and the land trust, I think that they definitely are hoping that that will be available, should they be able to do a project.
So we, that's not something that the city initiates necessarily?
Right.
Okay, okay.
But we also talked about partnerships with large, which are, with large employers, and I just wonder where would that come from then, if we don't have something?
Yeah.
In here.
I mean, maybe at council, that's something that we could bring up and say, hey, there's this 124,000 dollars, what can we do, and then next year, that, you know, we know that there could be extra money, or, you know, that million dollars, and say, okay, we were able to do this much with this much money, now we'll do more with more money.
One option that you have that could work on this is that if you, whatever the amount is, if you took that out of unappropriated fund balance and put it into the general fund contingency, then it's available if you decide to do something with it. And you could do a budget amendment and then transfer that over. If it's in the unappropriated fund balance, you would not be able to spend it, but you can for contingency.
So we can transfer it now to be able to spend it later, but if it sits where it is?
It just goes into the fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay.
Let's do that. That gives you the flexibility.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, again, if you look at it, at the, at the general fund, you have 1.9 million dollars, it's contingency. That's for any unexpected expenditures. If you decided to do this project at a later date, you could amend the budget and use the funds for that. Now, that 1.9 million may be available, it may not be, more than likely, it will be. But if you kind of want to ensure that it's going to be, then you can take some out of the unappropriated fund balance and put it into contingency, so you can use it.
I thought, my mouth dropped, I said, I thought you were talking about moving this 124 in the workforce housing.
No, I'm talking about.
That's what I thought at first, I was like, whoa? Moving nothing.
No, I'm talking about just to have more in the, in the general fund contingency that could later be transferred to workforce housing.
Okay, okay.
I move that we transfer 300,000 from the unappropriate fund balance to the general fund contingency.
I second it.
May I have a motion and a second? So, of the unappropriated amount, it's like 640, 648, 648,000?
658.
658.
It's currently 641.
641. And of that, 300,000 to that. I, I would question why not all of it, pending these last few things.
We have two more projects to talk about.
So that's why I would.
Well, the, the other side of it to consider is that whatever you don't spend this year carries to next year and becomes a buffer against inflation.
Right, right.
So that's the other side of the coin.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, we have discussion, any more discussion?
Who seconded it?
I did.
All right. Let's take a roll. May we have a roll call, please?
Riley?
No.
Kevin?
No.
Doug?
No.
Chester?
Yes.
D. Ritchie?
No.
Susan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, sidewalks, we, just to make clear, we, we increased the amount of sidewalks by how much?
350,000?
350, okay, and. Okay, so I don't think we should, are gonna add 250,000 dollars more. Okay, the last one is the remodel playground and park equipment, park maintenance fund, Wakuma Park, Regatta Park in Color City. So my idea behind that was that the three different parks, Color City's getting 160,000 dollars. different parks, Keller City is getting a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which I think was, said may, they probably could get a bathroom. I've been to the, all of them, and I was, proposed this so that we have a uniformed look through all three of our playgrounds. If Wakoma, if the Keller City park is getting completely redone and all ADA compliant, and I don't know how much of Regatta Park is, and I don't, and I know Wakoma is not, I thought this could be an opportunity to have all three parks be uniform, all three of them be ADA compliant, and all of them have the same theme. So that's where I was coming from for this, um, this line item.
Chair, is that, is that part of the parks master plan, or do you know?
I don't know where on that it, that it is. I know that there was, Mr. Chandler?
I can just make mention from the meetings with the parks advisory board, or the parks committee, they might agree with you on that, they might not, but I do think they want to be consulted as to, if you're going to add extra funds, what would be the best place to use those.
Lila? Microphone, please.
Chandler's correct on that, and so if you, if you put those funds in there, then they would have those available to, to make some decisions with. And so I...
Recommendations?
Recommendations?
So, so what Mr. Chandler said, sounds like they would not like the money to be put in there, and they want to be consulted before putting money there. And you're saying that, yeah, I misunderstood, I, 'cause that's what I heard, so I don't know.
What I'm saying is that if, if there's money there, they would love it. They would like to be consulted on how to spend it.
Oh, okay, so I would like to increase, oh, okay, thank you for clarifying. I would like to increase the park maintenance fund by, um, well, I don't know why that number, I don't know how I got that number, I'm sorry. A hundred and fifty thousand dollar, a hundred and ninety, I'll just, two hundred thousand dollars for the playground, I don't know how to properly say that, the playground equipment remodel for all three parks.
From, from the unappropriated? I think if I understood Mr. Chandler correctly, it'd probably be the parks board advisory committee would probably appreciate if we put it in the fund, but didn't specify what it was for, 'cause that part of the decision would come from there.
Okay, park, would that, to correctly?
I think that's correct.
Park maintenance fund?
Parks capital fund.
Okay, one moment for my motion.
Park maintenance fund, okay.
Ooh, Riley got one.
I would like to, I would like to put two hundred thousand dollars in the park maintenance fund from the unappropriated contingency fund.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Have discussion.
Where were we taking it from?
The unappropriated...
Inappropriated money.
Correct.
Which leaves approximately a hundred thousand dollars unappropriated.
Well, we're at six forty-one.
Now we take the two, now we're at four forty.
Three hundred didn't pass.
The three hundred didn't pass. So we're at? Did not. Okay, okay, so we're at the discussion of the two hundred thousand dollars to the park maintenance fund. Do we have discussion? Okay, may we have a roll call, please? Could you do Kip last, please, if he's back in time?
If you went really slow. Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
No.
Dee Ritchie?
No.
Susan?
No.
Kip? He left the room.
He left, he's, he's the one that's gone, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
And we shall wait for Mr. Ward.
We shall wait.
Because right now it's seven to three.
She said she'd like to revisit her motion. Oh, okay. Your motion that you made earlier?
Yeah, the three hundred thousand didn't pass, I'm wondering if two hundred thousand...
We're wait, we're waiting on you, Kip. The motion, did you hear the motion?
Yes, no.
The motion is...
Did you vote no?
Do you increase the parks?
He said yes, he did hear it, and he's voting no.
Vote no.
No is my vote.
Oh, no is your vote, okay. You failed it. Then you failed it.
That's right.
So we've still got, um, how much?
Six, six forty-one. Motion failed. We make a... How about I do half as much?
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I just insert a comment?
Absolutely.
So we're, in the general fund, we are facing expenditures that are growing faster than revenues, and a lot of the expenditures are very difficult, if not impossible, to control. If we use, the more we use up, the quicker we're gonna have an issue to deal with, which is gonna involve, we will either have to find new revenue sources, or we'll have to do cutting, so please bear that in mind.
Absolutely. Okay, so we have six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in appropriated money. Does anybody want to put that into the contingency?
I would make a motion that we use a hundred thousand dollars of the unappropriated money into the parks fund, maintenance fund.
Okay, well, I'll second that. The first one failed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Another one.
I know, I need to keep my...
Okay, so the motion is a hundred thousand dollars to that fund, seconded and in discussion. No. May I have a roll?
Wait, I'm confused, did someone second it?
I did.
Oh, you did, thank you.
May we have a roll call, please?
Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
No.
Dee Ritchie?
No.
Susan?
No.
Kip?
Nope.
Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Seven to four fails.
Okay, so now, um, we have that six forty-one.
Debbie's giving you the...
No, 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 just relax. I know, don't spend it, I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, hers.
Do we just leave it in the unappropriated, or move it to the contingency? I think that's the last, the last little thing before we go to the tax and the sewer. We have nine minutes, 'cause we have to leave by ten.
The one point nine million has been sufficient in years past to carry us through any contingencies.
And we still have one point nine, and you think that's sufficient?
It has been historically, yes.
Any other ideas that, I mean, you just had that six hundred, no, 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 because he gave us the amount of six million, it's fine that it's six point six million?
It is, there's no problem with that, at all.
Okay, so, okay.
Let's vote on the tax rate.
Yeah.
Well, do we approve this now, as amended, to go to city council before the two?
You can do it all in one motion.
It's all one motion, right here.
Or you can, you can break it out, or do it all in one motion.
So, tax rate, let's do the taxes.
Okay, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve, as amended, the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen city budget, approve a tax rate of four point zero nine nine six dollars per thousand dollars of the assessed value, and approve a sewer bond levy of one million four hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Second.
The motion, in a second we have a discussion?
Well, I would like to discuss how we have this extra money, but we're keeping the same tax rate, and if we could lower it for a year, and then it go back up. That's all.
Why shake your head, it's fine. It's fine, I'm just talking about it, I don't even own property. Come on, I get, I'm gonna save fifty bucks, I'm just talking about it. Okay, any more discussion? Alright, may we have a roll call, please?
Dee, did you, did you second it?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Riley?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Dee Ritchie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yep.
Dick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Does that bring us to the end? Is that it? Well, congratulations. Let's go.
I want to thank the budget committee members.
Everybody, thanks, everybody. Look at all these department heads are still here. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate all the work you've done. Mr. Chandler, everybody, thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned. So Debbie, Debbie, will you update our...